Thank you for making it to the meeting on time and for, because we have an earlier than usual start time, we have a 5 o'clock start instead of 6:30. Our first person for the first agenda item is a recognition. And what I'm going to do at this time is let Sandy discuss it, and then if our guest of honor appears, we will then take that up wherever we are in our regular meeting before we get to the construction manager interviews. So, take that prerogative with the agenda. Go ahead Sandy.
Okay, thank you. We wanted to honor Rebecca Tank. She's just finished 8th grade at Hudson Middle School, soon to be a freshman at our high school. She was selected for the 2016 Middle School Honors Performance Series at Carnegie Hall. So she just came back from that, so we wanted to wait and do it so she could share a little bit about her experience. She performs, performed as a saxophonist at Carnegie Hall, and she was with the Honors Junior Band. And participation is one of three honors ensembles, and it's limited to the highest rated middle school performers from across North America. She was nominated by her middle school band director, Kalen Brown. She submitted an audition and performed the concerto for alto saxophone by Alexander Glazinov. And after review, she was notified of her acceptance this spring. It's a very elite group. They take only the most talented, dedicated, and high achieving students. What we do know too is that Rebecca has already had the opportunity to perform twice in the Wisconsin State Music Association's middle level honors band. This past year, she received the first chair part. She also performed in the Shell Lake honors bands for the past three years, and received an exemplary solo performance nomination last year at the Wisconsin State Solo Ensemble Contest. She's an amazing, amazing musician. The other part I wanted to share is not just playing. I also learned too recently that she received a state level honor for a composition she wrote, and that she scored a piece for a full concert band and learned in May that she took first place in the instrumental ensemble category for middle school compositions. And our very own St. Croix Valley Community Band is working on the piece and will perform it at their July 21st concert. So again, when she arrives, we'll hopefully hear a little bit about her experience at Carnegie Hall and recognize her. Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you for that summary, and I thought it was just an awesome article, and again, another example of Hudson students excelling. But we look forward to hearing from Rebecca directly, and like I said, we'll interrupt the meeting between agenda items where appropriate if she is able to make it here tonight. Next item up is citizens' request to speak about non-action items. Do we have anyone?
They're here.
Oh, okay.
Rebecca, will you come right up to the microphone? I'm going to bring you right up here.
So Tim, we don't have any citizen requests to speak, so we won't have items 3 and 4. And so Rebecca is here, and you just were given an introduction you weren't able to hear, but we've all had an opportunity to read the article. And now I want to hear what it was like from your perspective to play at Carnegie Hall.
It was really exciting. It was a really good experience, and there's a lot of other stuff that we got to do other from performing there. Like we got to see a Broadway show and some other stuff too. That was pretty fun, and I met a lot of other people from, not from Wisconsin, but like all around the country.
Rebecca, what was one of your high points, you would say, as a musician, playing in that group?
My high points? My high points? Just that it was a fun time to play there, like playing with everyone else, and since everyone else takes music as seriously as I do, it was fun to get to play with them and have like a great outcome for the music.
Right, because everyone is at a very high level that's invited to participate, correct?
Yeah.
And I'm going to send you a link. We have a link too to her audition performance. And if you go in about two minutes in and close your eyes and listen, there's this amazing set of runs that she does that you would not think that this is just an 8th grade student. It's absolutely amazing. You are an amazing musician for your age. We are so proud of you.
I really look forward to getting that link, not being very musically inclined, but knowing that like that and sports, you need to have lots of practice to be good. And so I am curious, you had to audition for this, and you've probably have played the same piece lots of times. Did you feel like your performance at Carnegie, did you play it as well as you had before?
The audition that I played?
Or the actual performance then? Do you think that you nailed it in other words?
Oh, the performance at Carnegie Hall. I think, I didn't play the Glazinov concerto at Carnegie Hall, but like the band pieces, I think it was, I think I played them to the best of my ability, obviously, because I practiced them a bunch. I wanted to make sure that I was like good to go to play with all those other people, you know?
That's great. That's awesome. Do other board members have questions? Sandy?
I do. So I have a granddaughter who plays the saxophone, and I know she's going to ask me, how many hours a day do you practice?
Oh, it's a range. I mean, well, I usually practice six or seven days a week, and one to three hours, I'd say.
That's a lot. Thank you.
And that's in addition to your violin practice, right? That's your other instrument?
Yeah, for violin, I usually do one to two hours.
That's great.
That's how you get good at something, practice.
Yeah, just a lot of practice.
Congratulations.
Thanks.
Sue, did you have a question?
Yeah, I had a comment. Well, first of all, congratulations on your virtuosity with the saxophone. How did you, how do you prepare? Did you have kind of a mindset or a preparation thought that you had to do before you went on stage at Carnegie? How did you kind of get your?
Oh, I didn't have like a mindset to be, like I had a mindset to just be focused on the music and enjoy it as much as possible, because it would probably be one of the times. I, it would be cool to go there again in the future, but if it doesn't happen for a while, just to take it all in and, you know, see how it goes. Which it went very well, it was really fun, yeah.
Bruce?
Have you thought about what you want to do for a career at some point in time? Does it involve music, I presume? But I mean, what do you, what do you envision for your future?
So there's a lot of choices that I've been thinking of. I think about it a lot, actually. I'm thinking of either, so if I compose, then I'd want to do composing and conducting. And if I do saxophone, then I'd probably do jazz gigs a lot. And for violin, if I choose to do violin as a career, I'd probably want to go into like the Philharmonic or Minnesota Orchestra.
And then who's your inspiration? Like is there someone that you look up to, that you listen to all the time? Like who's that?
Eugene Rousseau, saxophone player, and Dr. Chernahoy, who is in the community.
Great. Well, thank you again for your efforts and for making Hudson proud. Just phenomenal success so far. I know that you've still got lots of road ahead of you yet, but I think that you're going to, you're on a great path. So thank you for, again, your efforts.
Yeah, thanks for having me.
And we have, all right, so now moving on to President's Report. And up on the screen, you'll see the Hudson School District Project Progress Report. And we've got all three areas of the project. Is this something that is already posted or will be posted on the website? Do we know?
It will be.
It will be posted after tonight. But I presume that this is prepared by Bray since it's on their letterhead, and I see we have representatives from Bray in the back, and they're going to be present and participating with the interviews for the construction manager later. What I have here is, this is basically an update for the public, which will be obviously shared with the board as well. And what I want to talk about was the construction committee. We started calling it something else like Secondary Space Steering Committee, but I think that that name was misleading. We may have had, some people believed that this was the committee that was going to be making all the decisions. That's not the case when it comes to approval of the final design of both the middle school and the high school, and the auditorium, and the stadium. That's all going to be done by the full board. This construction committee is a subcommittee, a temporary committee of the whole board, but one that can attend meetings, which are with our architect. I presume the construction manager will be attending these once the construction manager's selected, but it's going to be basically every two weeks. So a minimum of two meetings a month for one hour in which we get updates. And if minor decisions need to be made in between full board meetings, that's what that committee would be doing. What we have not set yet was dollar amounts for change orders possibly. And so there will be a suggestion. We get to action items tonight, that's where a formal motion to adopt this. We've had basically at one meeting of the construction committee already, it was kind of informal, it was last, we could go Tuesday, I guess. So the next one is set for tomorrow, and that was attended by me, Sue, and Rob. And we had talked about at our last work session, which was June 27th, the formation of this committee and the comparison of whether it would be a task force or a committee. And unlike the process steward team, which was a task force made up of two board members, two administration, and four community members, that's, that was the makeup of the task force, this is going to be a committee. And at that construction committee, of course, our experts are going to be attending as well as administrators, and I assume that would include Nick and Tim Erickson, and other administrators as appropriate, and also our building grounds. What's his position? Jim Staskel's position, I was trying to say manager, I guess. But so, anyway, that's the basic makeup of that. If there was any questions about that, I didn't want any lack of clarity about the difference between the task force and the temporary committee. Temporary committee is appointed by the president, and if it's appointed by the president, the president only serves till the next May. We are on one-year terms for our officers, so then whoever that next president will be for 16, for 17, 18, would then have the opportunity to either reappoint the members to the construction committee or bring in new board members to that construction committee. But some ideas that had been suggested by our attorney, because you don't want to get in a position where you're caught in a bind with the dollar figure on the change orders. But one suggestion was to authorize Nick to sign off on change orders that might be up to $5,000, and then a number between 10 and 20 for, that the committee would approve. Anything over that amount would have to be approved by the whole board. And depending on timing, if it was necessary, we'd call a special meeting, but we want to try and keep our special meetings down to a minimum. I should also point out that these projects, all three projects, are going to be discussed. There may not be progress on every meeting on every project, but we will have an update. This is going to be on the agenda for every work session and every regular meeting, basically for the next three years. Okay? So that there's board, full board input and participation and hearing the progress at least twice a month, which would be at the work session and then at the action meeting. So there's, but is there any further discussion or questioning about how we're proceeding? And we can discuss and get a motion when we get to the action item on maybe exact dollar figures, but general thoughts at this point, or comments? Anyone have a different view of how we had our work session from June 27? Okay. Very good. Then at this time, we'll turn it over to Tim Erickson for preliminary budget, unless, Nick, you had something to say about first?
About the preliminary budget?
Yeah, the 16-17 budget.
No, we're just, we're going to give you a very, very, very brief snapshot of kind of where we're getting. We got our July 1st estimates. Tim will be able to walk you through that real quick, and then really the big, the big one comes in about two months, isn't that right, Tim?
Yeah, yeah. So yeah, we'll get to, yeah, so as Nick said, this is pretty brief. There aren't a lot of changes from the last one that you saw in June, other than we've updated the aid, equalization aid, that line 621, which is the $23,675. So the aid estimate came in, again, it's an aid estimate. These numbers can fluctuate anywhere from the low five figures, sometimes up into the six figures, so when we get that final in October. But we're up about 4 tenths of a percent, a little bit higher than what we had projected in that first preliminary budget. So aid is going down only a little over a half a percent rather than almost 1%. So just carrying that change through, we get down to the bottom, so you can see that surplus or deficit at the very bottom of about $549,000. Again, our estimated change of the 15-16 fund balance, we were projecting that will be somewhere around a half million dollars under budget for this year, so that will help. And then the projected unassigned general fund balance is standard about 24.28% of expenditures, which is just slightly below the board policy minimum of 25%.
All right. With that, any questions? I had one, I guess, on the 15-16 budget. You know, we're only July 11th at this point, but when do we get an unaudited analysis of how we did on the 15-16 budget?
The unaudited, that's, that's, right now, that's a rough number.
Right.
So that's what we, what we're projecting that's going to be, is about 500 to under.
Okay.
Now, that will change, because we still have invoices coming in and those types of things that are for 15-16, but we'll have a, I would imagine, we'll have a final number in the next few weeks here.
Okay. So probably at our next full action meeting, we would know what the snapshot was for 15-16.
Yes, we'll have, yeah, we'll have a, we'll have a good, a real good idea in August.
But until we know what the property tax base is, and what, the last week of September, first week of October, somewhere in there, we usually find out?
Right, you get, you get your, yeah, your final aid estimate and the property tax valuations come in, the final stuff for the districts come in, in October, mid-October. We'll have a, we'll have an idea, because the value, property valuations come out in August for counties and municipalities, so we can get really close to that, so we'll update that, you know, we'll have an update on that in August, and that one will be very close as far as the property valuations.
So this budget will be reviewed again before our annual meeting on that second Tuesday in September?
That's right.
All right. Okay, any questions about the budget?
Mr. President, at this point in time, do we have any, do we have any number per pupil, loss per pupil from state aid?
Well, we, you know, what we have here is just, you know, from the, when you look at that top portion revenues, so the equalization aid, of course, that's our biggest, one of our biggest aid numbers that comes in for the district. So we're now on about $133,000 there. And then we've got the per pupil categorical aid increase, which is included in 610. There are some other revenues in that number, but that one's up a little over half a million dollars, so that, that helps. It certainly would help if we were, you know, somewhere in a 1% or 2% increase in the equalization aid, but you know, we have to do the best we can. So does that answer your question, Sue?
Mr. President?
Yes, Rob?
And Tim, we are under the 25% fund balances percentage of expenditures, but you know, we're trying to manage what we're asking of the taxpayers. Is that fair at this point?
Yes, yeah, yeah. So we're, yeah, we'd be looking at, you know, certainly trying to absorb that as much as we can, and as we go through the budget process, the numbers are going to continue to change. I'm hoping they're going to continue to change in our favor, but yeah.
But so far, going over the last four or five years, if we've been roughly at the 25% or higher, it hasn't caused us any problems with cash flow?
No, we'll be, we'll be okay with cash flow, yeah.
All right. Any other questions? All right, very good. And we'll move along to budget, or the, sorry, action items under the agenda. First up, our consent items, and I would entertain a motion pursuant to the language.
Mr. President, I move approval of the consent items and that the Director of Financial Services be authorized to pay bills in the amount of $2,798,881.51.
Second? Right. Motion by Lynn, second by Rob. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries and the consent items are approved. Next up is the academic standards identification and notification. I presume that Sandy would be handling this, and she handled it at our work session when we covered this two weeks ago today.
Correct. Wisconsin Act 55 requires school boards to approve the academic standards for each school year, and for districts to notify parents and guardians of the standards that will be in effect. Next slide, Tim. So for the 2016-17 school year, we are recommending that we maintain the Wisconsin academic standards. These are the same standards used this past school year. And then finally, next slide, Tim. To meet notification requirements, the standards will be posted as they are right now to the district website. So again, we're seeking approval of maintaining our current Wisconsin academic standards.
Is there any questions on this point? Again, this is statutory change from a little over a year ago, I think, that required us to do it last year, and we have to do it on an annual basis. And any other questions? All right. I think that, does this require action by the board then to adopt this? All right, I'll entertain a motion then.
Mr. President, I move that we maintain the Wisconsin academic standards as the academic standards used in the Hudson School District for 2016-17 school year.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Sue, second by Lynn. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The ayes have it, and the standards have been renewed or approved for renewal for the next year. Next up is the approval of the Hudson Middle School schematic design. I would ask Matt Wolfert from Bray to come forward with this item. Emphasizing again, this is approval of schematic design. This is still a month or two away from final design where we would have construction documents based on it. But we discussed this a little bit at the last work session, the general concept of number of classrooms and how it was configured. This is a little bit closer to what we had for pre-referendum. It's virtually right on what we were telling folks in the pre-referendum. Those who watched the architect interviews know that we did have a couple suggestions for maybe moving things around. That was looked at, it was decided we'd best go back to what was there originally as far as being most cost effective. With that introduction, I'll just turn over for Matt to take us through what we have is several pages of designs here, and very small print.
You bet, Jamie. Thank you. And I am not going to go through each page, of course, we're on a bit of an abbreviated timeframe this evening. I hope what you're seeing tonight is, is progress. We're really happy with the direction the middle school has taken. Staff has done a great job providing feedback, Anne and her team are really being helpful in developing these plans further. What you see is a two-story addition. First floor consists of four 8th grade classrooms, two special ed classrooms, a team planning room, and then the second floor, again, four classrooms, one of each is science. So you'll see a slightly larger classroom to support the science curriculum on each floor. What Tim is scrolling through is all of the work that we need to do to advance the project. So you're seeing developed site plans, conceptual site plans, showing how we're going to regrade and accommodate the emergency egress road around the building. That is about the only site challenge there. It's a relatively straightforward site project, other than that, making sure we can get the grading to work. So the civil engineering partner from point of beginning is well underway. They've got five or six feats of demo plans and layout plans and grading, and you set utility plans, so we're making good progress there. They obviously lag a little bit behind us, so if you notice that the building footprint they're using is a little different than the floor plan we're showing, that's because they work about a week behind us until we pin a footprint down. But we're not moving enough that it's going to affect them. So, big picture, sites right on track. We're going to be hoping to make a preliminary submittal of the site package to the city shortly. If we get good feedback from the internal team tomorrow in our work sessions, we'll make that submittal to the city in preliminary fashion very soon. The floor plan, again, is right on track. We're on target for square footage in both the addition and the renovations. That's a really good sign. At this level of development, that's a good indicator that we're on track for budget. We won't know until the CM's on board after tonight, and we do a bunch of detailed budgeting efforts with them. All the engineers have been engaged. They are beginning conceptual work on the middle school, but again, assuming that the board is comfortable with the schematic level of development this evening and is in approval, we will turn them loose to begin detailed design as well as early as tomorrow. The gym is approximately 6,800 square feet, about 65 feet wide, and you can do the math on the length, a little over 100 feet there. 10-foot of clearance on the ends of the courts, about six to seven feet of clearance on the left or west side of the plan. A significant, good amount of clearance, six to seven feet on the right side when the bleachers are pulled in. So in kind of FIED configuration, really good clearances. We'll drop a curtain in the middle. If they would like to run two separate FIED classes within that space, they can. Otherwise, in a practice or community access and competitive use, the bleachers will be pulled out. We'll work tomorrow a little bit on exactly how off-center we want to position the court to get the clearance where we want it between the bleachers when they're pulled out. But this shows three rows of bleachers at this point. Again, I don't know that there's a whole lot here. This should look pretty familiar, some resource space to support the four classrooms, two special ed. I think what's good is we are providing some special ed spaces that are a bit more specialized in nature, whereas they weren't designed for that previously, where they're currently functioning. So some of these spaces will have bathrooms attached, have some small laundry facilities with them, things that may have been lacking in their current space, we can provide in this new construction much more economically. So really looking at improving not only just the addition, but the existing spaces that'll be impacted as well. Still working on final layouts for office renovation and student services renovations. We do need to get that corridor through on the first floor to make that connection work that's in process, and then at this point, we're still feeling like we're good on program and going to meet that. And then on the second floor, we're taking the art storage room as our corridor connection. Thank you, Tim. And we will be recreating that art storage within the addition. So we're not eliminating it, we're just moving it over into the addition to create that connection.
So just real quick, just to kind of recap everything, the action tonight is just basically saying, yes, we're heading down the direction we said we were going to head down with the referendum, and that there will still be a final board approval process prior to us going out to bid with the floor plan and everything else. This isn't a, this isn't a, yes, we approve, build this exact plan, it's, yes, this is what we told you, the direction ahead, which was 10 to 12 classrooms, which we have essentially four regular ed classrooms on each floor, and then two specialized classrooms on each floor. We're staying within our square footage parameters that we talked about in the, in the pre-referendum information out to the public. You know, through the next design development phase, you know, there might be a tweak in a wall or move a little bit, but overall, you know, the theme is the gym, four classrooms of regular ed, two classrooms of special ed on each floor, which then allows us to recoup Merlin House as a, as a house again. We break up the special ed, because right now it's all centrally special ed. And so in the end, this concept gives us three new houses at the, at the middle school, but doing it with just the two-story addition like we talked about.
So I have a question. You said there was four regular classrooms and two special ed on each level. Which of the, I see six rooms here, which of the, which are, which two are for the special ed?
So the two on the far left on both levels are special ed, both.
Okay.
You know, the, we have a CID classroom, and we also have an ID classroom. Those have very specialized spaces for kids with different needs, and then smaller group instruction classroom across Gattick Oracle, wouldn't it be, Tony? In the two other classrooms as well.
Okay, thank you.
So, science classrooms are stacked on top of each other in the bottom right-hand corner. What will happen with the teachers, I'm assuming Matt, the next stage, is they'll go in and they'll start making suggestions on how the inside of the rooms actually look. You know, what should the millwork look like in, in classrooms? What should, you know, what type of things do we need to have considered in the special ed rooms for holds, for swings, and different things like that? And so that's kind of the next phase, but we just, all the way along this process, we want to just keep the board informed and also make sure that we're hitting what we said we were going to hit, and that you agree that we're hitting what we said we were going to hit. And that's really, the motion tonight is really to, to approve the, the concept and the direction that we're going, and to continue moving in this direction.
One other question for Matt. I'm not familiar with what the, what required gym sizes are, or what's suggested are. Is what, you just told us about the size of this gym, is that typical?
Yeah, I would say, I would say a single station, as this would be referred to, varies anywhere in square footage from 6,500 to 7,200 square feet, so we're right in the middle.
Okay.
We're a bit restricted on width here, because we have an existing gym wall and an existing office wall, and that's our limiting dimension that we have to work within. So you can see some of the classrooms are a little narrower and taller. They're still meeting our square footage target. Often you'd see Often you'd see a square classroom, more or less, 30 by 30 to get to 900. This isn't bad, I'd argue this is better. It gets us a closer dimension, gets more students closer to the direct instruction wall if we're going to have one. It makes the structural span a little bit farther, but it's not an unrealistic structural span at all. So, again, we're taking, we're working with the constraints, but we're not sacrificing at all the quality or the overall layout that was desired by the board and the community.
Okay, thank you. Mr. President, I'm, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Rob.
Yeah. I had an opportunity to talk with Dr. Nick prior to the meeting, but during our construction meeting, you mentioned a third story, you know, potential mechanical space. Nick had mentioned that's not the case.
I misspoke, I apologize. I did not reference the budget appropriately. It is planned for a rooftop mechanical equipment, just as you currently have on the building, so similar style. We are at least one boiler short, which we're planning for, always had in the budget. And the thought right now preliminarily is to take advantage of some existing mechanical space above the current gym area for that boiler and we'll simply pipe across the, the new gym to pick up the addition.
Okay. And then, Dr. Nick, we're not, we're on point with what we committed to the public, is that fair?
Yeah, absolutely. You know, I think that's part of why we stuck with this design. You know, one of the designs had the main offices moved to the north side of the building and it just would have been, I think, it would have been a tough sell to say, we never talked about building brand-new office space and now all of a sudden we're building brand-new office space at the middle school. There's always been a renovation component to the office space because we have to cut a corridor through the middle of it. So, that's just, that's always been a part of it, the same thing with the, with the art room and things like that. So, this is, this is very close to what we talked about. We said anywhere from 10 to 12 classrooms. We are within our square footage requirement, or, you know, what we thought we'd be. And so, yeah, I think we're, we're right on target with delivering what we said we would deliver and I think that's going to be very important for the board.
One minor thing, and just because it's going to move quickly because site's going to happen pretty quick, so we may not get back to the board before we develop it in too much more detail, is we need some small retaining walls to make the grade work between the track and the road. And the thought that our team is working with the Civil on is instead of just building a retaining wall for the sake of that, we may look at building multiple small seat walls instead to actually create a small outdoor classroom. It's, it's a minor thing, but instead of just building a retaining wall, we're going to try to take advantage of that need to construct it and try to build a bit of an outdoor classroom if we can afford it.
Yeah.
Mr. President?
Yes, Sue?
I'm sorry. Okay, I'll be quick. I know that Ann Mitchell's had a lot of input and you've had conversation. I was curious as to how many of the staff, particularly people that have areas that they have to, you know, manage, like labs or whatever, have you had opportunity to listen to them for specifics?
I will openly acknowledge that I'm not engaged in the detailed discussions with staff, so I will defer to Ann if you'd like. I believe they're well-engaged in shaping this plan though.
Yeah, so we have, so the architects have met with middle school building staff and Ann and her team. There's also been a Google Doc that's been created with suggestions and things like that and the architects have access to that Google Doc as well to kind of keep running things going. The, the next phase of that engagement will be the actual programming of the individual spaces that'll be coming up over the next, you know, month or so and as they work through it. So, as much as they can be at this point, they, they have been involved in the process. Ann's obviously been intimately involved in the process all the way through and so we'll continue to do that. Yep.
Carrie, did you have a comment?
That's the first I've heard of retaining walls. Have you ever, would you ever, would it be feasible to have like a rock climbing wall?
We don't need to go that steep. We could explore that as an option. We just, we needed to make up a few feet in terracing and one thought is to do just one single retaining wall is what they were initially thinking and we just said, why, let's not do that. Let's consider multiple smaller walls at a seat wall height instead. But we could sure look at that if that's a desire.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? I just think this is great that we're basically getting three extra houses at the middle school in what amounts to 12 classrooms. So, that's good. All right, any other questions?
I just have one more comment. I just want to say I really enjoyed looking at these site plans and details today. I absolutely loved it and I looked at each of them very carefully, so.
You better set aside a few weeks when the high school comes out.
Well, I know, I will, I'll set aside a few days. Okay, thank you.
With that, is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve the middle school schematic drawings.
Second.
All right, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The ayes have it and the schematic design is approved. Next up is the appointment of the construction committee. And given my discussion before, I'd entertain a motion to set parameters for the committee and then I will, as President, would make the, the appointments, which would be good through the first meeting in May of 2017.
The motion here, do we have to, once you appoint the committee, we have to approve it? Is that what the motion is for?
No, the motion is to create the committee and then set parameters for dollar figures as far as what, if they have to make decisions on change orders, what dollar figure. The attorney suggested five maybe for the superintendent because the board needs to delegate something. We don't want to reconvene the whole board for making a $1,500 change order. And likewise, if it needs to be in timing, I mean, we, if that's a decision that needs to be made, we don't want to wait two weeks and then find out that the two-week wait now made it a $4,500 change because we waited too long to get the committee together or to get the board together. So that's why I believe it makes most eminent sense to give Nick, Dr. Nick, some parameters of up to maybe 5,000 and then have some parameter, it could be 10, it could be 15, it could be 20, is what the attorney said. I would suggest, let's set it at 15 and if we needed to raise it to 20 later on as the committee goes on, then we could do that. But that's just a suggestion. I'm open to whatever dollar figures you include in the motion, but I need somebody to make a motion.
Right now, you're just looking for a motion to create the committee. You don't want all those details.
Yes, I want the, I want the, the motion to say, Mr. President, I move that we create a temporary subcommittee that you will appoint and that we give that committee authority to make change orders up to 15,000 and that the superintendent of Hudson Schools be given authority up to $5,000. That would be an example of a motion that I would entertain at this point.
Okay. Mr. President.
Just say so moved.
You're lucky I have a good memory. I make a motion to allow the President to set up the committee, the special construction committee, and that the committee be allowed to give Nick the, the permission to deal with change orders up to $5,000 and the committee to deal with change orders up to 15,000.
Second. All right, it's been moved in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, and at this time, I will appoint Rob and Sue and myself and I would appoint Sandy as first alternate. And if we have to, we'll get into second and third alternates, but hopefully we can keep three people at the meeting because it's really important. We don't want a one-to-one vote on something in the future, so.
Real, real quick on that, on that committee, just a reminder, all board members are welcome to attend those meetings. We posted, just like we would post any other meeting, you're able to talk and ask questions of the architects and everybody else, just as if you were, you know, one of the other people at the table. The thing is, is you don't have any voting ability at the, when something comes to a vote with the committee. But like as we said, the, there's not that many major, the major items aren't coming before that committee, the major items come before the whole board. The only reason to give the committee power to approve those change orders is to be able to do things in a more timely fashion, so, just as a, just as a reminder.
Yeah, since, considering we haven't set the final, final budget for either project or none of the three projects, it's going to be a while before there would even be a change order, so I'm not anticipating this first year, probably a second year there, there would be more. All right. With that, then I will now take a recess and we'll set up for our first construction manager presentation by C.G. Schmidt. Call the meeting back into order and I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Nick Olet to introduce our process and our first candidates.
Absolutely. So, as, as we talked about two Thursdays ago, there'll be a half-hour presentation by each of the firms, followed up with a 15-minute question and answer session and then we'll, I'll kind of tell you when you're getting to about that five-minute mark on the presentation. So we really want to make sure we reserve the, the full 15 minutes for the board and we want to make sure that we're keeping the time scheduled the same so that someone can't say, well, I went first, you kept me to 45 minutes, but the last firm, you know, got two hours. So, well, with that being said, I'll go ahead and we'll get started and I'll turn it over to the folks from C.G. Schmidt.
So first of all, thank you very much for allowing us to be here. We're very pleased and very excited, this is a tremendous project and we're very excited to potentially apartment district to do better to do this. So before we go through individual introductions, I'd like to take just a brief moment to introduce C.G. Schmidt, a firm, to everybody so you can be aware of it. Currently, the firm is owned by myself and my three brothers who started in 1920 by my great-grandfather. We currently have 300-plus employees growing. In 96-year history, you've never been in a lawsuit with an architect or client in the art industry, that is relatively unheard of, so that's something we're very proud of. One of the top one of our largest construction managers in the nation, right there, I currently have over $500 million on the property.
Excuse me, you might need to turn your mic on. It's actually, the button has to be up instead of down.
Can you hear me now?
Yep, and then you need to have it like within three inches of your mouth.
Three inches, okay. I haven't done this since I last sang, so I apologize. So, as it relates to individuals, again, my name is Eric Schmidt. I'll be leading this team as we endeavor to build your particular district and buildings. I've been with the firm for 25 years. I've done a significant amount of K-12 experience, almost half of my experience is in the K-12 marketplace. And I'll be the main point of contact from pre-construction all the way through occupancy of the building. So with that, I'll turn it over to my other colleagues.
My name is Ross Ayers, I am a project manager with C.G. Schmidt. I'm our proposed senior project manager. Been with the company now for over 15 years, worked on a variety of different types of projects over that time, in particular, education projects. Currently working on a project for the Elkhorn area school district.
My name is Dave Mangan. I am a senior superintendent for C.G. Schmidt. I'm also a licensed engineer in the state of Wisconsin. Been with C.G. Schmidt about 12 years now and currently I'm working on a project on Roots and Center. Right now, it's a, it's just a living facility and it's taken quite a bit of phasing also as this project will.
And I'm Sarah Dunn. I'm the director of client strategies. I've been proud to say I've been with the firm for about six years now. My role is to be kind of the main point of contact with, with you, the district, the client, as far as client satisfaction goes. And I also work on community engagement and communication as well.
My name is Mike Odly. I'm a professional engineer in the state of Wisconsin. My background is mechanical, electrical, plumbing systems and I'm here to make sure the facility needs get solved and that the designers' designs meet your needs, that they meet the schedule and they meet the budget.
And then in addition to these people who will be your primary contacts throughout the entire duration of the project, there's literally dozens and dozens of people at our corporate offices that helped to support us so that we could achieve the results that the district desires. And specifically, you asked about the number of personnel hours we have allocated to this particular project or intend to. At any point in time, there's going to be approximately 15 people working to support this group as well as over, well over 21,000 man-hours dedicated to this particular project. And that just gets to our experience. The amount of experience we have as a firm and as individual team members, over a third of our revenue as a firm is done in the K-12 market. And so that has allowed us to develop systems and policies and procedures to really maximize the value for the districts that we serve. And it helps us to learn how to accommodate school schedules, work within occupied facilities. Very rarely do we, are we ever able to go into a district where they don't have ongoing operations. And really what that means is we have to use every resource we have to make certain that the goals of the districts are achieved. So when we start talking about relative experience, we pick these particular districts out of the many that we have simply because all of us have worked on these districts in one form or another. And then you start looking at the similarities that they pertain to some of the challenges and opportunities we'll face for, for the Hudson district, you start to see that the experience becomes extremely relevant. Specific.
And as you can see, this is just a small sampling of the different types of projects we've worked on. We've done hundreds and hundreds of education projects, but this is just an idea that we try to pick some districts that were really similar to your projects here in Hudson.
So one of the districts that I'm finishing up in right now is at the Ripon School District. We're remodeling approximately 130,000 square feet of that district this summer, over the summer months. That includes adding sprinkler system to the building, which was not previously sprinkler, that's moving the kitchen, not upgrading it, we had to move it, that's labs, auditorium upgrade, adding three-station gyms, STEM, in addition to having a charter school in its occupied full-time while we were doing all this remodeling. Another example is Marquette High School, one that we're currently doing with Bray. This is, we were hired to do the master planning of this particular project. This included turf fields, cafeterias, commons, lab space, again, upgrading mechanicals, all while the school was in operation and working around the school operations, which was 24/7. They never shut down, they have ongoing summer operations constantly.
This is a project that I worked on. I supervised this project last summer. And this particular project we had was, was in a Baraboo School District. We did seven, seven schools in the matter in, in 10 weeks' time and the price tag on that project was just under $10 million. It was phased through spring and the summer 2015. It took a tremendous amount of coordination with teachers, staff and contractors. It included a lot of maintenance upgrades, new roof, new windows, new heating systems. It was a small addition on one of the schools, so encompassed a little bit of everything.
The Elkhorn area school district, that is a project that I've been working on. It was, it's a $20 million referendum that passed as of spring of last year, went into construction late last year, so it's kind of a similar timeline to what you're having here or expecting here in Hudson. We've got six additions to four of the schools, renovations to all five schools in the district. When we first started on the project, the expectation was that we were going to build through essentially the end of 2016, but looking at phasing opportunities, talking with the owner, we were able to trim that down to a completion date of Labor Day of this year. So we're in full, full speed ahead out there right now.
And all those schools, virtually every school that we've done in the last 20 years have always had MEP, mechanical, electrical, plumbing improvements. So you're not alone, deferred maintenance of boilers, chillers, controls, and that accounts for anywhere from 25 to 40% of the costs and that's what I'm here to help manage.
You asked specifically about our, our phasing and our processes and when we put together a response to the RFP, we really, we really looked at two different ways by which we could serve the particular district. The first way was what we call a traditional CM agent. And in this particular example, there would be two, maybe three bid packages. We'd bid them out to several large general contractors who would then subcontract, they'll work out to much smaller contractors, so on and so forth. The advantage is that our fee in this scenario would be a fraction of what it is that we have proposed in the ultimate proposal. The disadvantage, as you can see by those little red dots, is those red dots indicate somebody's markup on top of somebody else's markup. So in this particular scenario, our particular fee would be much, much less, but you start to see the layering effect that adding profit onto other people's work starts to have on a total project, which when we laid that out, we felt that it would be a better value to the district to utilize our proposed bidding approach, which is dozens of bid packages and work categories bidding out to dozens of contractors yielding in significant savings to the district. And basically what this does is we administer many more contracts for the district. It means that the cost of our work to administer that goes up because we have to have additional manpower and labor to track this, but it also means that we peel away the layers of markups that happen. So you no longer have a large general contractor putting markup on top of subcontractor's markup. We peel that away so that you only have our fee, which is standalone and as you mentioned before, is lump sum, and then the direct contractual relationships with subcontractors, material suppliers, as well as equipment suppliers.
So it's important that we manage the bid process properly. It's our real opportunity to maximize your dollars and maximize what your money can spend, can buy. For example, at Elkhorn for Phase 1, the additions were bid out late last year, there was an 18% spread between the high, the sum of the high bids and the sum of the low bids. On 8.7 million dollars, that equated to 1.6 million dollars. So, in a lot of instances, there were clusters of bid results in different trade packages that were right around a number, but in a couple of instances, we had low numbers, were able to take advantage of those savings, help out the budget, still work with good, reputable contractors. So that's the kind of thing that we'd like to be looking for here at Hudson. There is a qualifying process that we go through. First of all, we want to advertise to the subcontractors. We want to be an advocate for the work. We want to develop a targeted bidders list with the help of the district. Those vendors who we feel would be good candidates for the work, we want to be in touch with them prior to the plans even hitting the street. We want to let them know that the work is coming forward. During the bid process, we want to be in touch with them, letting them know, hey, the plans are out there, are you looking at it? See if they have questions. That's part of the process, part of what we do during that bid management. Again, when the bids come in, we qualify the bids, we make sure that the company is actually capable of doing the work. We'll qualify the, we'll screen the labor. We'll make sure that we got appropriate workers working in the school district. And then when the numbers come through and we qualified all of those bids, we'll sit down with representatives of the district and make decisions on who's actually going to be awarded the work.
And then ultimately, when it comes to actually writing the contracts, in our 96-year history, I mean, we've been writing a lot of contracts with subcontractors, and we've learned a lot of pitfalls along the way to avoid. So we would bring that experience to bear on behalf of the district. We would write the contracts for you if that's the way you would like us to do it, so that all you have to do is sign and move on. Again, it's the assumption, it's us taking on the assumption of risk that as a district you don't have to.
Maximizing local participation is typically an important thing for the district. Politically, it makes sense, because you're getting more involvement from people in the area. But it makes sense from a financial standpoint, too, because it's more opportunities to get those good low numbers, that low qualified numbers that we're looking for. So we help in that process. There's a list of a few of the vendors that we know you've worked with in the past. These are some of the people that we want to target with and be in touch with throughout that bidding process to make sure that they're getting involved. Also, we are proposing to be a pure CM. We're not proposing to do any of the work or bid any of the trade categories, which sometimes is the case. So subcontractors won't have that preconceived idea that they might not get a fair shake. So that's another advantage of the route that we're, you're proposing to undertake here.
And I think that's important to point out, is that it really encourages participation of local contractors when they know it's a pure CM. Everything is above the board, they're not in competition with us, there's no incentive for us to try and swing things a certain direction. Our only incentive is to get as many bids as possible for the districts, so you can make a fair analysis and choose who you want to use. Another thing you asked about was cost accounting. We have systems in place to manage the total project budget, because we understand that also construction is a significant portion of this budget. It may only be 80% to 85% of the overall. There's still 15% to 20% of the budget that has to be managed. And if you don't have the systems in-house to manage those, we have developed them, we are happy to bring them to bear on your behalf. We're happy to assist with the architects if they're performing some of this work themselves, so that we don't have any gaps as it relates to ordering of furniture, ordering of equipment, making certain your IT needs are covered, et cetera. And then cost accounting, we have a state-of-the-art cost accounting system. I'm going to be perfectly honest, I have no idea how it works. I know that it does work, and I'm glad that it does, because we paid a lot of money for it. But at the end of the day, all that it promulgets is an open-book approach, completely transparent, and it forces us that we are never able to pay the same invoice twice, because of the stopgap measures within it. So it eliminates some of those human errors associated with this. Because this is going to be a tremendous amount of accounting on an 83-plus million-dollar project. But it also forces us to update the financials in real time, so that at any point in time, the appropriate people in the district can call us and say, I need a snapshot of what our financials are looking like, and we can email it to you within seconds. You asked about a budget review. We did go through the budget, can you hand them? Sorry, I wasn't expecting this. We did go through the budget line item by line item. I didn't bring enough copies for everybody, but we just wanted to test at a very high level to make certain that the budget was adequate. And what we found is that with a typical budget, there's pluses and minuses with line items, it's perfectly natural. But at the end of the day, we thought that the mechanical, electrical, and plumbing component might be a little understated to the tune of approximately $300,000. So then I went back into the budget and I started looking at what you were carrying for general conditions costs and markups. And given the proposal that we put forward versus what you're carrying in the budget, we're approximately $300,000 plus under that. So, long story short, the two offset one another. So we believe that there are certain line items that we're going to have to pay attention to, like mechanical, electrical, plumbing, as well as the soft costs, looking at this with a fresh eyes and not really knowing what you're planning on reusing versus buying new. Your soft costs are approximately 14%, that's a little bit light relative to what we've seen. But it's all within the ballpark, and we think with effective management that it's easy to achieve your goals with the budgets that we see available to us.
The $300,000 that Eric mentioned, that doesn't mean the sky is falling MEP-wise. You need to push the button. There you go, there you go. That doesn't mean the sky is falling MEP-wise. $300,000 on $90 million is less than .4%. And that challenge is always in front of us as a construction manager. If you're not over-budget slightly, you're not really challenging your designers and your staff and everyone to prioritize what is most important. So you're only $300,000 over, you probably have more wants than we even need, that we know right now. But the key is knowing what your wants are and what the dollar amount is, so that you can prioritize and get the most bang for your buck.
And then another question was the administration of the contracts. Again, we list what we take care of from pre-bid all the way through bid award. And really, all this list is meant to represent is that we are prepared to assume all the risks for the district. That's effectively why you hire CG Schmidt, is because you're not set up to adequately cover the risks associated with construction. That's why we've been in business for 96 years, we are. So when it comes to risk and how to mitigate risk for the districts, we basically have you guys covered. You asked about construction timeline and phasing, and I want to add that this differs a little bit from the RFP, because we're taking a look at it with a different set of eyes that we're accustomed to. And so I wanted to do is overlay the different phases that we came up with as they relate to one another in their entirety, and then across the timeline as well, across the top. And so what you start to see is that there's a tremendous amount of work that's being accomplished in the summer of '17 and the summer of '18. Our experiences, schools are typically out of session, that's when we jump in there and do the bulk of the work. But what we've also done is shifted a significant amount of phasing that had happened during the school year into those summer months. Because we recognize the challenges that come with performing work activities around operating schools. And so with that, I'll turn it over to the rest of the team to kind of go through with a little bit more detail what that phasing's going to look like.
One of the things we know with a complicated phasing process is it's really important to communicate with all the key stakeholders. We work really closely with Tracy to make sure that that information gets out to not only the, you know, students, but the teachers and staff, as well as the parents and the neighborhood as well. There's going to be different traffic patterns, parkings, deliveries, you know, all those types of things that will come into play. So it's just something that we need to really take in consideration as we start to communicate the different phasing to this project. And one of the, you know, challenges with managing phasing, as Eric can probably talk a little bit more about this, is just it really has to be a collaborative approach.
And that's the most important thing, is that the phasing plan that we're going to present to you has been done in a vacuum. We have not talked to the district, we need to talk to the district. I'm not going to assume that this isn't going to change. I anticipate that through a collaborative, comprehensive environment, this will change and be tweaked. But the ultimate goal is to avoid impacts on students and staff, and to make certain that the school is able to function and operate efficiently during the months that we're under construction.
So we'll go through a little bit of a phasing plan here, and to give you a few of the highlights, the orange that you see, those, as we go through these slides, that's the work areas that we're currently, or proposing to be working in. The blue line represents the bus and parent and staff routing, and the yellow line indicates construction traffic.
And what we're just trying to show on this first slide is pretty much the physical separation of the routing for both the construction traffic and the public traffic. We try to keep those separate constantly, so there's no mishaps. We're building two new parking lots in this phase, and also, they just want to let you know that our plan is to have all contractor parking off-site, and we'll be shuttling them to the site and back.
That's something that we do regularly on some of the tighter sites.
This next plan shows contractor off-site parking and shuttling. Foundation work for the addition has started, football fields and bleachers have started. And we're still maintaining the original school access at this time at the front entrance. So I think that's kind of important for the timeframe. Summer 2017, we have taken over pretty much most of the site here. Continue to work on the addition, building center parking, we're building the center parking area, and we're finishing the athletic fields and bleachers. High school site phasing, fall 2017, we're continuing again on the addition, turning over the athletic fields and parking lot, I believe that is the timeframe, you were asking for the athletic fields and bleachers to be open. And we basically established alternate accesses for the contractor now that we can access from the south. Winter 2017, spring 2018, your additions are open. Again, we have alternate contractor access to access, to keep our work separate from the live school. And we have also rerouted traffic to avoid construction traffic within your neighbors in the neighborhood. We know that that's a hot-button issue with them, they don't want to see construction traffic through the quiet streets. Then summer 2018, we're pretty much finishing up. Site work, landscaping complete, and we started the remodeling of the kitchen, auditorium. These started in this phase just due to the fact that there was quite a bit of long lead items that Ross and I believe that we needed time to look at and decide upon. Usually it happens with those two items in a school.
All right, then getting into the interiors of the school and what that means from a phasing perspective. The first phase would include foundations on the additions, we're looking at doing that as soon as possible in winter, as soon as we can get started next year. Some of the things that, some of the concerns that come up at this stage are partitions isolating our work from your ongoing activities. These need to be hard partitions. We need to talk with the district and staff about noise control, dust control, interacting with some of the things that you're going to have going on, your typical day-to-day, you know, there might be fire drills and the like that we'll want to know about. So that's winter and spring, foundation work. As we get to the next phase, in summer, we're proposing to take this area and start renovation work. Obviously, there's things that need to be discussed from a mechanical perspective, there's considerations.
Yeah, so there's be a lot of phasing that goes on, and we need to draw the lines of the phase based on the mechanical systems affected, or sometimes the opposite. So sometimes the MEP systems will dictate the phase in the architectural side, or sometimes the architectural side will might have to affect the MEP final design. So we need to figure out the phasing soon. And if we can, steer the MEP systems so that they're discreet and partitioned off with the architectural remodel.
All right, then we get into fall and winter of next year. At that point, we're putting in the enclosure together on the addition and starting to work on finishes, wrapping up that phase of the project in around spring break of So if you go to the next slide, you'll see at that point, around spring break, we would propose that we would start on some of those classrooms over here on the east side of the building. Those students could then go into the addition, which is complete, might be for a temporary, will be for a temporary period of time on the fourth quarter of next school year. But again, allows us to get a little bit of a jump on that portion of the work. And then finally, in the summer of 2018, we're wrapping up the addition, taking on that kitchen and auditorium that Dave mentioned, and again, getting ourselves in a position where, start of school year 2018, the high school work is complete. Oops. Don't want to menace the middle school. On the middle school, from a site standpoint, our staging would be down here, that was indicated in the RFP. We think it's a reasonable area. We would propose putting a temporary road right here. We would not want construction traffic running through your current drop-off. As we get into the phasing, here we want to start, I know that that's been the focus of Bray from a design standpoint, it seems, has been the middle school, so that would be the first area we would expect to be starting on the project, getting that addition going. That would be in late 2016, all in anticipation of wrapping things up by start of the 2017 school semester. Getting into the next summer 2017, then there's a little bit of renovation that occurs on both levels at the tie-in points, and that would happen again in the summer of next year.
So we acknowledge- About five minutes. We acknowledge that this is quite different than what was included in the RFP. But what we really like about this particular phasing plan is that it reduces durations, it eliminates the amount of temporary moves that the schools are going to have to do, and it results in significant savings that you can reinvest. We know in the middle school, you've got five different temperature control systems that are battling each other. You could potentially look at utilizing the savings to come up with one master system, getting rid of an outdated pneumatic system. We're also aware that your tennis courts, you would like to see some improvements made to those. We could then apply these savings to some of the tennis court work, et cetera. The whole idea is to dig up as much savings as we can so that we can return it to the district, and you can choose how best to reinvest those monies. You ask about our schedule of fees. I assume this meant a draw schedule, like a cash flow statement. The thing to remark or to note with this is that we're proposing to withhold charging any fees on any of our work until certain milestones. So for example, we wouldn't charge a fee until the middle school was done, and that you're happy with it, you acknowledge it's done, then we submit a fee. And what this will do, it will make certain that we get done when we say we're going to get done. We're going to be done-done, and they're not going to have ongoing lingering issues that sometimes happen with construction, and that you're happy. And all this fee structure will incentivize this project team to accomplish those goals.
Next, he also had asked us about our breakdown of included services. And as you can see from this long list here, we do everything from pre-construction to post-construction services, and everything in between. One of the things I want to draw your attention to is if you look at your placement, there's a SWOT analysis on that placement, that's kind of the first step that we do with the district. And we kind of started this process, but we basically look at your strengths, your weaknesses, your opportunities, and your threats for these projects, and what these mean to the community. And from that, then we will tailor and identify those actual services that you're going to need. There's, you know, some things that you may not need as a district, because you already got through the pre-referendum process with the successful passing of a referendum, but so it kind of just helps us organize ourselves and know what that offering of services will be for the district.
One of the things you also asked about was the, any additional general conditions, we believe our fee covers any additional cost that may or may not be realized.
And then we always like to say, trust what our clients say. You know, you can't take our word for it necessarily, but you can sure take our client's word for it. So you can see here, there's a couple of different quotes. We included a couple of quotes in the proposal as well. So I'd really encourage you to reach out to our clients and ask our clients what they have to say about working with CG Schmidt. One of my favorite ones here is, you know, by far the best firm I've interacted with in over 30 years of facility management. That was with the facility maintenance director for Beaver Dam School District. So he had spent in the business a long time, so that's one of our favorite quotes that we like to use when we're intervening with districts. And then the next thing that we also take a look at is something that I'm also in charge of for our firm, is called our net promoter score. Basically, it's on a 100% scale. If you look at different, like business-to-business services, you know, education's at 68%, financial services is at 37%. So this is basically us going out and asking our clients, would you recommend us to another client, to a friend, to a colleague? And we have a score of 92%. So it's something that we're really proud of as a firm. And a lot of our competitors brag about having a 60% to 65% net promoter score, and we're proud to really say that we have a 92%. So I guess I'd like to close today with, why would you like to hire CG Schmidt? And there's all sorts of reasons to hire CG Schmidt. Here's eight that we think are probably the most important to you as a board into a district. You know, everything from, as I mentioned, the net promoter score to our quality, to our open and transparent process. But one of the things that I think really differentiates us is having an owner, his attention and commitment to the project. And I would like to turn it over to our owner, Mr. Eric Schmidt, to say some final words.
And really, you're going to measure the success of this program by having these incredible facilities that are going to enhance the educational opportunity for the children of this district for literally decades. And that's something that we're passionate about as well, and we're so excited to be given the opportunity to be a part of. given the opportunity to be a part of. But we're not going to measure success until we find that your quotes are up on the screen. Because to us, the most important thing is turning our potential customers and clients into CG Schmidt salespeople, because it's your recommendations that matter more than anything that we can say standing up here before you. So again, thank you very much for this opportunity, we're very excited to potentially be a part of this project, I think it's going to be absolutely phenomenal for what it's going to do for the Hudson School District. So thank you.
Okay, opening up for board member questions.
Mr. President.
Yes, go ahead, Rob.
And so our project is a little unique, I mean, I've heard that our project is likely the largest of its kind in the state. You know, we have 122,000 square feet of an addition, more than 200,000 square feet is to be renovated by varying degrees. Can you talk to or share with us the largest, most difficult retrofit, you know, renovation project, K-12?
Sure.
Why it was challenging and how you were successful?
I think from my experience, they're all challenging for different reasons, and it's difficult for me to pick any one. You know, David came from Baraboo, and that was only a $10 million project, but it was $10 million in 10 weeks at seven different schools. So that had a whole slew of challenges that we had to overcome. The one we're finishing at Ripon, where it's 130,000 square feet of remodeling while the school is out of session in approximately 11 or 12 weeks, the scope and size of that one is challenging because, as I said, it's different between remodeling a kitchen and moving a kitchen, because all your infrastructure has to move with it. They moved their kitchen. And so while they're moving their kitchen, early on, we found ways that they could maintain their food service so that we could get a jumpstart on the kitchen. So I think the largest district I think we ever worked on was Elm Brook, and I don't know the exact value of that, but I know that was absolutely about $100 million. But I don't want to just dissuade that because of the number, it was the most challenging, because like I said, what Dave came from was 10 weeks of hair on fire to get this thing done, because the unique thing about school districts, you can't miss your dates. Now, what are you going to do, tell your kids, go come back next week? That's not an option. So putting the systems in place up front, putting the rush on up front, which is what we do to get ahead of the game so that then we can coast to a finish, and when we finish a school project, it's not nearly as hectic as the demolition that goes before it. Does that answer your question?
I think so.
Another one too, just to mention, is Brown Deer School District, that was a consolidation from three schools down to two, combining a middle school and a high school, which really had some challenges to it, not just from a community perspective, but as well as just an instructional and, you know, getting parents on board with that whole concept. So that was another one that we worked on fairly recently, we created a field house, you know, a five-station gym, so there was a lot of challenges with that project as well.
Mr. President? I just have two questions. In your presentation, the diagram that you're using is the original diagram from Bray's original drawing, that got changed at the point where we chose an architectural firm, that got changed, changed rather extensively from what you're using. So that change in that diagram isn't going to change your timeline though, right?
No.
Okay, everything would still go, and if that changes again between now and the time we actually end up with the final plan, that is not going to change what you're telling us here?
My expectation is that it will be in a state of flux until the moment we go to CDs.
Okay, great.
They're always tweaked, they're always being revised, that's all taken into account, yes.
Okay, one other question. I have gone over the fees that you presented us with. Is this everything? Because I don't like surprises. I want to know that this figure that you've given us is all-inclusive, that there will be nothing that gets tacked on at the end.
That is all-inclusive. Everything that is not included is what we call cost of work. So the actual work of the project, call it steel, concrete, all that stuff, that's not a part of that number, obviously.
Right, no, I get that.
But the management, the staff, everything that's associated with the work that we're doing to help manage the project, that's what that number represents.
Okay, and it doesn't matter how long this project takes? You've got your projections, and we hope that they're accurate, but let's say we run into some trouble, and we're a couple, two, three months later, the fee is not going to go up because of a month's delay in the project?
No, because we're still going to try and get it done in the same timeframe, because like we talked about before, if something gets delayed at the beginning of the project, say a month, we still have a hard deadline.
Okay.
So then what we have to do is figure out how to get you into the school in the same timeframe, because like I said, we can't just tell the kids, you know, sorry, you're going to get an extra month of summer.
Or their parents.
Or their, yeah, I really don't want to tell their parents.
Thank you, you have answered the question very well, thank you very much.
I just want to let you know too, that one of our core values as a firm is no surprises.
For that reason.
That's good, because I don't like them, I don't think anybody does. Thank you.
Not unless it's Christmas morning.
Okay, so just to follow up on that, if it says in the fee, that means that
It's covered.
It's covered. And if it says cost of work, it's covered?
It's cost of work.
Yep, it's not something that is, you're going to charge more for?
Correct, it will be, the cost of work is something that will be bid out.
Okay, and then my next question is though, several items have allowance next to them. Does that mean that if you exceed that in the cost, you're going to charge more?
Yeah.
For instance, like $2,500 for construction signage.
Yeah, and allowance was defined in the spreadsheet for us, so that's what we did is put together as accurate numbers we were able to cover that, and if we don't spend that allowance, those monies are returned to the district, and if we were to exceed the allowance, we would notify the district ahead of time and give the district options to provide the same, take a project sign, for example, if there was a design for a $5,000 project sign instead of the $2,500, we would give the district several options of a $2,500 project sign to get back in budget. Or if you felt it was worthwhile to spend the additional $2,500 for the bigger sign, that's at your prerogative.
Okay, so if you're off on your allowance on the low side, then the district gets money back, but you'll work to keep it within the allowance anyway. Some items don't have allowance next to them, and I'm looking at computers and copiers. You want $300 a month for 24 months, it says, so if you don't need to spend $7,200 for computers, does any of that money come back to the district?
Yes.
It does.
The money we save short of our fee, which is a lump sum fee, the money that we save is associated with general conditions, will be returned to the district.
Okay.
So if something miraculous happens where we're done in 20 months, and you don't need all those hours of manpower, that I had figured those dollars are returned to the district.
So with regards to slide 14 of 50, you talk about the saving markups on markups. You know, that's a real challenging thing to do when you're dealing with so many subcontractors, where typically a controls contractor will bid to a, you know, tenor, then a plumber and so on.
Yep.
How do you manage that, especially given the timeframes that we're under?
Sure, the most important thing we do is where it's appropriate is to pull those apart. So for example, there's going to be a significant amount of money spent on HVC equipment, we can buy that separately and then have whomever the low mechanical contractors install it, because it's all the same equipment to all the different vendors. And we have processes set up where we can accommodate that, we can buy steel separately from an erection company, we can buy rebar separately from a concrete company, we can buy concrete separately from a concrete company. That is the bulk of how we deliver projects for our districts, for that very reason is trying to peel away those markups. The, I'm sorry, the biggest markup is if we were to go to just a pure agent where we have, you know, a little small fee, but we have two or three large general contractors, that's where a significant number of markups occur, because typically, to manage, to staff, manage, and to make their fee on a project, it's going to be anywhere from four to eight percent, depending upon how much they want to work. Well, go to the middle of that, even five to six percent on an $83 million project, you're talking about $5 to $6 million relative to the fee that we're asking to do the same amount of work, that's where a significant amount of savings comes in. Plus, you're still not paying a CM agent at all at that point in time, we've been able to eliminate those two layers.
Do you have any issues with the mechanical contractor standing behind warranty on equipment you're purchasing?
No, because most of their warranties are coming from the manufacturer. Does that make sense?
Bruce?
Just, I guess curious to understand your knowledge of the market in this part of the state, you're a Milwaukee-Madison-based organization, which is great, I'm proud to be a Wisconsinite, love everything about it, but we do have, you know, a lot of opportunity across the river here as well in terms of competitive bids and recognizing that there's a lot of talent around in the area. So can you maybe just speak to your experience to this side of the state versus where a lot of your work seems to have been?
Can you pull up the map?
Oh, sure.
Yeah, we've done work throughout the state, so we provide construction services in Superior, Eau Claire, La Crosse, Rochester, those are the ones that pop into my head, La Crosse I mentioned earlier, Wausau. So we have quite an extensive database, a lot of the same local contractors have multiple offices throughout the state as well, so that we have experience with them in other parts of the state, contractors such as North American Mechanical, Inc., J.F. Ahearn, Face Electric, et cetera, et cetera. So what it comes down to is what Ross was talking about when we bid a project, it's more than just simply grabbing a database of local contractors and sending them an email, you really have to engage them. And that's a tremendous amount of pre-construction effort of Ross and I, and potentially Dave and Mike, calling the contractors, visiting their offices, getting the notices out in a variety of different publications. We've bought AirPlay before just to make certain that nobody could say, well, I wasn't aware of it, in addition to just a simple email blast and the follow-up. Because what we want to do is we want to market your project as the premier project to work on in the area, so that we entice all the subcontractors in the area and the entire universe of construction to want to submit a number for us and for you. And that's how you start getting the number that Ross was alluding to, the right number, the low number, from amongst that pool of contractors. So we have an extensive database that we have internally in addition to just local databases that we can tap into from plan rooms and other items.
Thank you.
All right, we have another question. You had mentioned about things that would come in under budget for the general conditions would be monies returned to the district. How do we know where you're at? For instance, on your hours, number of hours put in, and you're charging for principal, a couple of the others are not charging for the principal to be involved in the project, but you're putting in 2,000 hours, in fact, over 21,000 man-hours, you're saying. What if it only takes 18,000 man-hours?
Let me clarify that as well, I said there's well over 21,000 man-hours, if you look at the proposal in front of you, it comes up far short of that. Many of those man-hours are being covered in our fee.
Okay.
So once again, our fee, the way that we were presenting it in the RFP response is our fee was a lump sum. To your statement, if the principal's charging, I think it's part-time for two years, if that person's only needed for less time than that, you get those monies back.
Okay, well, just overall, I mean, this is a combination of a percentage, which you're basing your fee on the 2% on the construction costs, estimated total construction cost of 81.6, basically. Is that negotiable? Are you going to be able to negotiate on this, whether it's the general conditions or the percentage?
Up to a point, yes.
Okay.
I'm always willing to go higher. That I won't fight you on.
Okay.
No, yes, it is negotiable, yes. And you made that, I think, some of the correspondents made it perfectly clear when we were filling it out, that this is for comparison, apples to apples, and
Yes.
the district reserves the right to negotiate.
In the end, we're asking for a flat fee, all-inclusive, flat fee. So obviously, we would think it would be unfair for us to get a return of fee if it comes in early, if we're not willing to pay you more if it takes longer.
Sure.
So we're asking for an all-in lump sum flat fee, both your percentage and all of your job site personnel. This, what this sheet did is allowed us to compare the different firms and how many hours or how much personnel they're planning on throwing at the project.
Sure.
Just because we've had very widely
A lot of various.
So we just want to make sure, we're trying to get as much of an apples to apples as we can.
Sure.
Yeah, just to clarify.
Okay.
But things like your travel up here, so if it takes an extra two trips a month, it's not something that you're charging for, for instance. And it would be, and the allowances, again, you're trying to hit the allowances, but if you exceed, we're saying this about four times over and over, but it's very clear, Sandy said it, she doesn't like surprises, and Nick said it, we want a flat fee, but I just want to make sure there's no examples of any kind of extra charge that we're going to see come one month before the end of the project, and you're getting a big chunk of your last fee there.
No. I have never in my experience done that to a client. You're free to call and ask.
How are we doing on time?
You have about 30 seconds.
Can I just make one more comment? You can always charge more comment? I sell real estate, I use it all the time when they ask me. People always ask me to cut my commission or to do something with my commission, and I say, sure, I can charge you more if you want me to, I'm worth it. Also, what Nick, the clarification that Nick made about, we're asking you for a flat fee, if your time and everything goes over that, we don't want to pay you more, but I agree with him that if it comes in under, we would not expect you to cut that either, because that's not a fair way to do business for you or for us. I'm agreeing with him.
Okay.
All right, anything else from any other board members? All right, otherwise, thank you very much for staying on time.
We certainly appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, and again, I'm calling a five-minute recess, and we'll ask our next firm to come in. All right, we will come back to order, and we will start the next interview, and turn it over to Dr. Nick to introduce the process and our next candidate.
Okay, so we're going to go ahead and get started, essentially as we talked about in the email, there'll be about a half-hour presentation, and then we want to reserve a full 15 minutes for question and answers with the board. With about five minutes left in the presentation, I'll just kind of give you, hey, there's about five minutes left to give you kind of a heads up, to make sure you're getting through everything you want to get through, and we're just trying to be pretty strict on the timeline, so that way no one firm can say, well, they got an hour in front of the board, the other firm only got, you know, 40 minutes. So without any further ado, I'll turn it over to Stahl, and we'll just kind of, we'll kind of go from here. Just make sure that you're speaking into the microphones, the button needs to be out in order for it to be on, it's the opposite of what it would normally be. So that way the cameras and everything can pick everything up, so.
And optimal distance is microphone three inches from your mouth, two inches from your mouth, all right?
That sounds great. Well, thank you for having us, we really appreciate being able to come here and meet all of you and talk about these exciting projects. So we'll walk through, this is our agenda, we tried to reflect the request we got from the school district as far as sections and what you wanted us to cover, and we'll jump right into it. So we're all with Stahl Construction, the company has been around for 35 years, all of that time we've been focused on serving public and private clients by about project numbers, so about half, though our volume is much more 80% serving the public sector. We have around 35 to 40 construction personnel, and we really manage for stability long-term. So we're not one of those, we're not a volume provider where we sort of fluctuate with the market, we've steadily had the same team grooming people long-term, building skills internally, and very cross-functional. So a difference between us and other companies may be that we have an engineer on a team, someone with a construction background, and someone with an architecture background, all serving construction projects, but as a team have very full-service ability to look at the project differently. We take on about eight to 10 projects at a time, we're very picky about what we pursue, and we're really interested in these projects. We really seek out opportunities where we can add value, work alongside a client, a great design team, and really help people make fantastic decisions around construction projects. And about 75% of our project load over time has been in the construction management delivery format. This will look similar from our proposal, but just helping you understand the team and how we kind of come together in our hierarchy, and introducing some of the members that are here today as well as some of the people who aren't. So I'm Jesse Bing, and I'm the president of Stahl Construction, I'm very involved in the business side, alignment with our team, setting up projects, making sure we understand our goals and management of that. Wayne Stahl is our founder and CEO, he's not present today, he would be very deeply involved in the cost estimating portion, he's a master cost estimator, really fantastic to work with. And another one of our differences as a company is him and our project management team are very involved throughout project development to help design teams target cost and understand cost as they're making decisions versus waiting for something to be done. It's just more robust and enables our clients to make smarter decisions through the process. And then also with me is Lee.
Yes, my name is Lee Harrison, I've been with Stahl Construction for 31 years, I oversee all of our construction projects, I work closely with our field, I work closely with our project managers, and I should be closer to this, right?
I can hear you fine, but I don't know that the TV's going to catch your voice if you're back.
So anyway, as I was saying, I work with all of our superintendents, all of our projects, project managers, and scheduling, I look at all the schedules, work with the superintendents to develop schedules, detailed schedules, and any issues that might be on the project, I take care of them, I help manage them. I'm also the chairman of our safety committee.
I'm Dale Sonnixon, I would be the project manager on your projects when you select us. I've been with Stahl for over 20 years, I have a background in construction going back to the Navy Seabees days, have a degree in construction management, have worked on quite a variety of projects, but almost all of them of them, in the last 10 to 15 years, have centered on education. So I'm very in tune with what the needs are and what the goals are, and how to deliver good construction management educational projects.
And I'm Brad Coulter. I'd be the lead field superintendent. I'd be on the, boots on the ground, as you will, on the project, and work closely with the architect and contractors, and hopefully as much upfront as we can as details and design is furthered along. And also, I like to do all my construction schedules with Lee's help, and run the day-to-day operations on the projects.
So Dale would be leading the program from the project management side, and Brad would be leading it from the field perspective, and the rest of the team would report through them. And that's key, and I'll talk a little bit about our alignment phase, but they're very much deeply engaged with the client, and they're translating that to make sure the rest of the team is very fully in alignment as well. So Leroy Wagner isn't with us today. He would be the lead superintendent for the middle school project. We also have other project and field superintendent members that would be involved in the project and phased in over time. This would be the team that would work with you upfront through pre-construction, through the entire duration of the project. So when asked about our experience, and we gave you guys these proposals with lots of great examples, and there's a lot you can read about us in our projects, but we wanted to kind of look at it at a little higher level and say, across a couple categories that seem really important for these projects, what are some of our greatest project examples? So we looked just first, I'm not clicking anymore, it is not moving, just as an FYI, but I can talk about it until it does come up. There we go. So the education sector overall, this year, we're really excited, we're going to hit our marker of having completed $1 billion worth of school projects alone. So, the education sector is a really important sector to us. We've really gotten to know how to work with school boards, how to work with the community directly, how to work with teachers and people on-site, and design teams focused on solving those problems to help make projects really successful. And I'll talk about that across our three categories. As we've looked at construction as our market, it's a very linear market, where services are very standard, follow the same pattern. We've looked at that and said, what's the difference between a successful project and one that did okay? And there's usually extra services, ways we could better understand clients, ways we could better engage with the community, that take something from getting done to being something widely supported and very successful. So we focus on adapting our services around really meeting our clients' needs on a level that sets us apart. So, we're just looking at education sector overall. We're really active in Minnesota. We have a second office in Iowa, and we have worked in Western Wisconsin a bit as well. So we wanted to highlight a specific project that I think shows how we align ourselves with our clients to deliver that value.
The Johnson High School was a hard bid project for us, excuse me, and we worked very hard to get it, we achieved the project, and we've worked very closely with the architectural group, with the owners' group, and in turn, that's turned into another CM project for us. We have an extremely strong relationship with them. We work well together. We trust them, they trust us, they suggest, they take our suggestions seriously, and we've helped them to save money over the course of the hard bid project, but also going forward with our CM project with them. So, we feel that we're really, we do a great job with developing relationships with the people we work with, because we know how important it is for you, it's just as important for us.
Absolutely. Occupied, or actually, did we...
Program.
Okay, program contingent? It's not quite right up there. There we go.
So when we, to follow up a little bit with what Lee said, we've done this a number of times, where we've bid a project as, you know, a general contractor, gotten a project in a district, and have had such good partnering experiences that we've translated that into them hiring us as a construction manager. For a long time, Lakeville Schools, when they were growing, we bid in 1992 an elementary school, and we ended up, I ended up being the CM on their Lakeville South High School. And that was over a 10-year, 12-year relationship. When you get into more than one school, we call it a program, and we're very experienced in working in multiple schools at one time and managing that process. Currently, I'm working with Brad on Providence Academy, and we're building a new performing arts center. It's going to be the first...
All LED.
All LED performance venue in the state of Minnesota. So I'm learning about, a lot about LEDs and stage lighting, and it's a very rewarding experience, but that's our third project with them. Brad's built all three of those projects. This is my first at Providence with Brad. I'm also on a project in Elk River. We were selected up there. I'm working on one of four projects that we're doing for that district. And the, it's an addition, a gym, I think it's a four-court gym addition, and we're also remodeling about 7,500 square feet of the office, the special education, and some other classrooms. And I can tell you that it's a lot bigger bite that we've chewed off than what we thought it was going to be, but we've been able to adapt and work with the owner, with the district. Once we were, actually, had all the bids and got contractor input, and really understood what we were going, what we're going to be facing, in order to get them open by August 30th, basically, before school opens, we made a strong suggestion, and they listened to us, we were able to partner with them. They were able to move out of certain areas and give us certain areas to start in earlier. We started May 16th in three or four spaces, and because of that, we're going to be successful. So it's partnering with the district and staff, and understanding what the needs are, and making good suggestions, working with the designers, all of that goes to managing the entire program.
And I might add to that, Dale. Also, in that district, one of the other schools, we're putting an auditorium addition on that school, as well as a science addition for science classrooms, and that school was occupied space the whole time. So now, with the start of the auditoriums and the science, we've now moved in the summer into the building, and it's going extremely well. And here again, working with the staff in the school, the buildings and grounds, it's going extremely well.
I'd also like to point out at the bottom of the page there, a quote by John McBroom, who was the superintendent down at Shakopee. Lee and I built their new high school, seven, eight years ago, but we got along really well with the superintendent. He was very hands-on, and if you read what it says, it says that the highest compliment that he can give is that we were true to our word regarding every situation that we faced over three years of project. We partner with an owner, whether it's a hard bid project or a construction management approach.
Can you talk a little bit about occupied construction as well, since that's got its own unique challenges? This is another area, public sector occupied construction has been an area of focus for our company, of looking at how do we handle that complexity well? And we'll talk about that even more as we look at your two sites. But there's some tools we've created, a lot of alignment we do, a lot that we do to connect with the community and communicate with teachers and students on-site, people that are nearby to make sure it's a fully-supported project. We've completed over $500 million and 6.5 million square feet of occupied school construction. And Dale was just talking about his Elk River High School project, if you want to add anything else related to that.
Well, just a little bit, one of the tools that we use, I could interject that somewhere else, but when we, when Brad and Lee start talking about schedules, one of the tools that we've developed is on, when we hand out a three-week rolling schedule, a look-ahead schedule, and we bring it to the team meetings with the owners and the architects, we use a tool that any of the activities, as they change, we kind of highlight to let the owner, whoever the, whoever the point of contact is, but we highlight which activities are going to, you know, have noise, have vibration, have dust, have odor. In an occupied situation, you having that information to get out to the staff, to get out to teachers, so they can understand what's going on in the room next to theirs and why this is happening, well in advance, so they can do their planning for classes, et cetera. It's just one of the tools that we use, especially when it's occupied.
And I really do think it's sometimes little things like that that take a project from getting done to being widely supported, because the teachers know about it. It's the difference of, I smell something, but I know, and I have my sheet, I know it's safe and it's okay, and it's an opportunity to even maybe talk to my students about it of what we're doing on-site, or I smell something and I'm alarmed, am I safe, am I okay? It's that little difference of pre-coordination and communication across how we work that seems to make a huge difference. And Brad, do you want to talk about Urban Dale Middle School at all?
Yeah, that was a project that was 22-month project, four additions, total, I don't think there was a space inside the building that we didn't touch, total remodel. And first summer is there 56 inches of rain, June, July, and August. Three subcontractors went out of business. We, I was able to still shave three months off the schedule, some creative phasing that I was able to do to get some of the building open sooner. It was built into my schedule, because sometimes, things don't have to take as long as maybe what was put out there for us to fill. So, that's the way I look at schedules, and we try to, you know, phase, maybe, I know there's a phasing plan with this, it needs to be developed yet, and that's one of the things, I just love to do that, where we can shave time, and time is money, and if I don't have to be there as long, that's great. The other thing I do is, we talk about safety separation, and the fume thing, I like to try to keep my additions negative. And what I mean by that is that, that they're not positive pressure, and they force fumes into the existing building, but try to keep them negative, so there's actually airflow from the existing building coming into the addition. They do that with fans and other ways of doing that, so that, we try to engineer some of those things out of the project, so that they aren't getting in and disturbing and concerning people who are on the other side of the wall. So, yeah, it's about...
You know, another example up in the Elk River District, we had hot roofs up there, ply roofs, so it's hot tar. It smells. So, ahead of that, we let the projects or the staff of the school know what was going to happen, we give them SDS sheets, so they're aware that this is not going to harm you, it's going to smell, but then we let also the staff know that we might want to shut down air handlers. We plan ahead, so it's pre-job planning, that really saves everyone a lot of headaches.
For the sake of time, I'll run through some of this stuff a little quickly. When it comes to our CM approach, a lot of that stuff is standard. When I talk about the things that set us apart, it's the step extra. So this first slide, just addressing alignment, which I think is key. You all have hopes and goals, and as does the community, you are supported through that. The design has, team has things they're trying to achieve. We really see our initial phase as deeply understanding that and documenting that ourselves. We create goals internally for our own team, so that throughout the project, of course, we're fighting for getting on down on time, budget, and all of the normal constraints of construction, but we see that as sort of the ante. It's how do we go a step further? I'll talk a little bit about communication around this too, but this alignment phase is key, so that every part of our team is fighting for your goals, as well as our own goals. And I will say, on our CM projects, we have a fantastic history of finishing on time early and significantly under budget. Our Elk River program is about $4 million across the board, under budget, with added scope included in that project.
When you talk about the approach, so there's different portions, that bidding is one of the primary focuses that I concentrate on during the pre-construction and during the final phase. One of the things that I like to do, and I think it works very well, is to break the project up into anywhere from 30 to 50 bid packages, so that subcontractors, when they're bidding, they're bidding their, the scope of work that they're familiar with. A waterproofer bids waterproofing. He has, he doesn't have to bid roofing with that, as an example. The exception to that is a carpenter, carpentry package, where I find that furnishing a lot of things like toilet partitions, or bathroom mirrors, or small things where the vendors aren't normally used to getting a bid bond and going through the public bidding process, we'll assign that to the carpentry package to kind of catch all of those things that we might not get bids on. I've done this quite a, quite a bit, quite a, quite a number of projects, and I've found it to be very successful. I also like to make sure that whatever market we're in, we're going very hard after the local contractors, subcontractors. I mean, we would make sure that we're, you know, advertising not only in Hudson, but Eau Claire, Superior, Lacrosse, as well as the Twin Cities, to get as many quality bids and local bidders as we can. Cost accounting, we have software that tracks job costs with reports, so we always know where we're, where we are as the job is going on. And as far as administering, administration of contracts for prime contractors, Jesse said, you know, we do both general contracting and construction management CM approach. And I'll be honest with you, one of the reasons that we're successful at it is we treat the contractors on, under CM contracts, prime contractors, the same way that we treat them is that they're our subcontractor. We manage them, we communicate with them, we give them goals that, whether, whether it's, like I said, whether it's a subcontract or a prime contractor, we treat them the same, and they respect us for it. If we have somebody who's maybe not holding up their end, a contractor, we go the extra measure to work with them to make sure that they're successful. We don't beat them down, we don't threaten them with lawsuits. I will occasionally write a letter and threaten to tell their surety that they're not performing, but we try and find ways to work with them to make them successful, because it makes the project successful.
I'll add on cost accounting, too. One of the differences I talked about in the initial estimating is, as soon as we can get involved in your design team, we're creating a baseline for cost expectations. So we're tracking ideas, we're tracking systems. As they come up with ideas, real-time in design meetings, we're giving them feedback as it relates to cost. Dale will later talk about the three big steps of SD, D, CD, where we have complete detailed estimates that are good checkpoints, but it starts from the very beginning. We know what you're trying to target and get done, and we're aligned with what your goals are, and so we're representing those interests in those meetings from a cost perspective. Community engagement and communications is another one of those ways where we really differentiate ourselves. So, yes, we're meeting with you guys during the construction phase, we're giving you guys good information every single week about what's going on, we're communicating with the trade contractors and design, we're communicating with the design team, but we take it another level further. We really like, and that comes back to that alignment, we want to know what you want to know. Do you have separate committees involved in the construction process? How do they want to be reported to? We actually create community-specific marketing plans for you. So if we can, we're flying a drone, we're getting time-lapse footage, we're producing materials about how much of your project is impacting the local trade community, and we're giving you those things to brand and use as you see fit. And we just see it as, you guys have gotten the support of your community, let us give you the facts you need to make sure that you're continuing to be supported by that community. So all of these different entities, we basically create specific communication plans around, so those groups know what they need to know from us throughout the project. And these are a lot of different things. We talk about services and everything we do, and it's a lot of information. What I want to get across is that really comes back to value for the school district. So I have just one example. It's two different projects that are going on right now. One is an E8 project that we're building in Atsego, and another is an elementary school, same design team, same materials, same timeline for hitting the market. Some of the things that we do as far as alignment and outreach, when Dale talks about bidding, breaking up the packages in a better way, aggressive outreach to the subcontractor community to make sure that we get good response and coverage that day, all of that translates to value on the project. So you can see here, area doesn't matter, or the total, but you're looking at the per-square foot cost for similar materials, and it's a big difference, about 21% higher for that elementary school than our school. So that hard work really does mean that you're getting that response. We're not even looking at fee and personnel, what it costs to hire a CM. In this case, they're nearly double our cost to have them hired on that project. But even if you take that aside, because you have that all looking at it here, hard work and the way that we do things does mean better pricing, better value to the school district. And now we really want to get to what we want to talk about today, which is your project. So, give it to Lee.
So with your projects, Brad and I have spent some time out there, and Brad lives in the community, so he's been over to the schools, looked at them. And the two schools, which is kind of nice, are relatively close, the two projects, so it had, that helps with kind of coordinating sometimes with subcontractors. And we understand that the middle school is your first project. So here again, we've, we've looked at this, we've studied it, Brad and I have talked about it a lot, and we've come up with a plan for staging of the site that we feel is workable. And we've come up with a plan for staging of the site that we feel is workable. And here again, we, we worked this with the information we have to date. Will things, can things change? Absolutely. I mean, once we visit with your staff, your groundspeople, the interior staff, we can make adjustments. But we feel this is workable right now. And here again, we're providing some safety and separation from the public, from students. It was mentioned that the play area had remained intact, which we are doing. But we also are allowing an access, controlled access for fire department. If we need to get up around the building, we can still get up around the building, the bus drop-off. And here again, when we start a project before it even starts, we do develop, and Brad's a big part of that, develop a project-specific safety plan. So as we talked a little bit about earlier, obviously it's a school property, so there's no smoking. We adhere to that, we respect that, and it's managed. Where the contractors can be, where they can't be on site, parking for them. A lot of different things happened on this site. But here again, it's all very flexible and it will change. Things always change. So we'll work closely with your staff.
Five minutes.
Five minutes left?
Yeah.
Okay. So it's, and here again with the interior, on this plan, we looked at exiting, where exiting can be, where we might have to reroute exiting from the old gym. The high school, larger site. And here again, we looked at this closely and a bus route, temporary parking, gravel parking area, fenced area, construction offices. But here again, it's all subject to change.
And one of the things that somewhat key with this layout that we've developed here is not knowing the full site plan and what the overall site will look like. I like this one because we've got some good safety and separation between, we have to recreate some different routes for staff and students. But I think this should work well. There are some things that if this does go forward that maybe need to be done this summer so that it's ready for when the school, the actual construction work starts next spring. So things like that we need to look at.
And here again, when it comes to scheduling, I look at all the schedules, work with the guys on them. And here again, in Elk River, for example, we review the schedule every week and we'll review it with the school. So if there's issues where they want an area sooner, we'll work it, see if we can get it sooner. So scheduling is a big part of every project.
As they look internally too, I think that's a really key element of the high school project is there's a lot of areas you're touching. So really understanding your use of those facilities now so we can plan that efficiently. And we'll talk about that in fee too. We think there's a way to do this a little more efficiently. So we're really excited about the idea of getting involved and be able to work through this because their plan reflects what's been communicated to date, but we see some opportunities. Anything else you want to address internally?
No, I think it's...
So as it relates to the cost element, we did submit a breakdown for you guys as well. There's a few things I want to highlight before we finish up our presentation. Our draw schedule, there's a couple ways that districts like to look at that. Sometimes they're looking at our fee, they're looking at our personnel, or they're looking at trade contractor volume. We can create it all three ways. So we, we charge our fee based on percentage complete. My personnel is charged monthly as is typical. And then if you want to look at trade contractors, once we finalize the schedule with you guys, we work through phasing, I create a map that looks at how the economic impact will look like so you can plan your draws. So we can do it all three ways. Pre-construction's all-inclusive. For our middle school project, we have full-time superintendent, PM, APM. High school, we have two superintendents as well as a PM, APM. And we actually have someone set aside for the stadium as well. We think there's probably a more efficient way to do this as we work through scheduling with you guys. As it relates to potential contract negotiations, we would recommend you leave that open to your benefit. So we, this is a not-to-exceed amount. And as we work through a better option for you guys, that cost comes down. You see the benefit of the fact that we can make it more efficient. We want that to be to your economic benefit. So we'd like to leave that open or we'd recommend you leave that open for negotiation. And then you wanted to look through services. That's one of the things we addressed a little more in depth in our proposal. It falls into typical places, phases, planning or pre-construction, design, bidding, construction, and occupancy. We have aggressive or robust services across each of those different phases. I don't know if there's anything we want to get into since we've probably got one minute.
Yeah, estimating, I think, you know, with three different stages where we will provide formal estimates. But we also provide, we also provide ongoing cost information during the design phase. As we see something that's impacting cost, we're going to raise our hand and let the design team and staff know that there might be a better way to do something to save, to save.
And from a high level, all of our services, we look at as we are an important expert at the table for you, with you guys, helping make good decisions. So whether it relates to cost or communication or the schedule or phasing, all of that, we see all of our services are in alignment with giving you the information you need to make the best decisions you can with the budget. You're accountable to your public. We are an important part of that to make sure you can make, make really good decisions around that and communicate that clearly and be successful across the board. So some of our differentiators, we are very open and transparent. We believe that the information we have should be what you have. We're very experienced in sustainable construction as well. That doesn't necessarily mean lead. It means we can suggest alternatives and help you consider options that actually are operationally efficient for your facilities. Education's a main sector for us, safety is key. We barely got to kind of talk about that, but we have a very robust safety program, a safety committee. And we're very deeply involved in that, and our EMR is fantastic. Corporate giving, we actually give away a percentage of our profits. We have a corporate giving committee that donates to the communities we build in. And then they create a list of elements they want to impact in the community annually. Technology, we really like to use that across our projects, whether it's bluebeams, drones, using softwares that our design teams like to use, BIM. We believe in using the best available technology to make sure we're working with good information. Our field superintendents are amazing, but ultimately those are all just facts. When it comes to hiring a partner, it's about picking somebody you can trust that you believe is going to have your back. And we really believe we can deliver that. We, we always go back to our tagline being we care as much as our clients do. We really put our full selves into our projects. And that's something I think comes across with our clients again and again, which is why we get great repeat clients. We will deliver that to Hudson School District, absolutely. Coming down even to someone in your community. And we'd love to end with a really great photo of Brad Coulter when he graduated from Hudson High School.
Brad still lives here, his wife teaches here. He is committed to Hudson.
Absolutely.
All right, with that, it's time for board questions. So board members have questions, go ahead.
So a couple quick questions. I've got one for Dale, one for Jesse. Dale, you mentioned when you're talking about shock-upy, that you partnered with the owner. What specifically does that mean that you partnered with the owner?
I'll give an example. You know, we could just bid or just build what's on the plans. But Lee and I were, you know, one of, one item that, one item that came up was we saw an opportunity for them to add, as an example, some valves on their chilled water system that would make it easier for them in the future to, to continue the operation while they expand it. And in fact, they're doing a huge expansion project that's bidding next week. And it just, it helps. We, we make that suggestion. You know, we look at things that will benefit the project, not just here's what we've got to do and that's all we're going to think about. So we, as I said before, whether it's a hard bid GC job or a construction manager that's partnering with the district, we treat it the same. We treat the clients the same.
Okay. And then Jesse, you mentioned that Stahl's picky on projects and that you were really interested in Hudson. I mean, we know it's a $94 million project, but why are you interested in Hudson?
We love complexity. I'll just say that. It's, when I came to the company, I sort of laughed that they don't seek out simple projects. But I guess our team in general is very good at looking at that, breaking it down to a really small level and coming up with really fantastic solutions. And that's where they thrive. I think that's where our company has thrived. So when we look at a high school that has every area highlighted and we're talking about working through that over a few years, that's pretty compelling. Beyond that, we've been talking to Brad about this for, well, as soon as your wife told us that this could be an option. You know, it's just one of those things. If someone's, if it's in our community, we get pretty focused on, on going after that well. So it's in our special sector. We love education, it's CM. Great opportunity to partner with an architect that we'd love to get to know more in a district that needs support. So it's interesting to say the least.
Other questions? I have one. I guess the, so we're looking at your fee and you have broken out as we had requested. But then I just want to make sure that we understand, we're looking for one fee that we're going to be paying and you do your best to estimate what it will cost you to provide those services and the number of trailers you need and the number of months and all that. And if you end up doing it less, then that's great. But if you go over, you, are you looking for more than this or what's your all-in fee? As I read it, it looks like it's 5.2 million.
For all of the costs that would be contained within this project, including some of the general conditions costs, yes. This would be a not-to-exceed amount. We don't think the schedule across these projects would go over some of the estimates. And that's one of the things even here, there's a couple different dates kicked around for high school or durations for the high school and middle school project. So we tried to show things even in a few different ways in our correspondence with you guys. But we also know that this stuff's sort of confusing for everybody to look at and understand. What's communicated through your spreadsheet would be a not-to-exceed amount. I think it would come down from there. Our fee percentage is what's fixed. Everything else is not. So if you look at it as that's a maximum exposure and besides our fee percentage and pre-construction fee, the rest would scale with the time that we spend.
Okay, so the pre-construction fee and the percentage are non-negotiable. Basically, that's the 1.45?
Yes.
Okay. And then, because you had questions about like superintendent's truck, you're saying 73 months. Given that we've got a couple different numbers being used, 27 months scheduled for high school, 29 months scheduled for high school. So I'm assuming that that's like using three trailers, sometimes four?
So, yeah, and for superintendents, we're talking about one, two, three, yeah, four. So it's, it's just applied across the amount of months they be working on the project. So when we'd work through the design team with that as far as scope and phasing, we'd come up with that final schedule. That'd be something we would typically provide our district to say, here's what we think it's going to look like. Even in the high school, we may be able to get away with one trailer and just kind of come up with ways that we can do that. But considering you wanted a not-to-exceed amount, we wanted to be careful because there's a lot we don't know as well. Very well, you may say that high school schedule is exactly what you want it to be at 29 months. So let's make sure we have that completely quantified. But I do think there's some opportunity for it to come down.
So that means that that's negotiable?
Yes.
Between now and tomorrow when we want to be able to agree to a contract?
Yeah, or, and or what we, what we typically do is leave it open in a contract. We leave it as not-to-exceed and to the benefit of the district. And all the CM contracts we have right now are written that way.
We would put in, what we have done in the past is to put in the hourly rates that would get charged while someone is on site. And somewhere in there, we could put that, that's, you know, that reimbursement of personnel is a not-to-exceed a cap.
Okay. Sandy, did you have a question?
I do. The not-to-exceed situation that you're talking about, so I'm understanding this. It's 5.22 million or 2.22 million and some change. That, what you're saying is in your contract, it's written so that all of these costs will not exceed that amount of money and maybe less?
Yes.
Okay, so that's a not-to-exceed. My other, my next question then is many of the things that you have on your paper here are allowances. There's a lot of things that are allowances. Are these allowances calculated into this 5.22 million? And what happens if these allowances turn out to be woefully inadequate?
I doubt that they will be. And we tried to be conservative based on similar projects we've done in the past. So we weren't, we weren't trying to necessarily be cheap. We were trying to help you understand what you could spend. So just say it that way. Allowances are left open. So for example, if we, if we're forced to be on site significantly longer and there's just going to be more toilets, we may work with you guys on strategy around that and make sure that we're not spending too much money. I will say, we don't spend a lot on general conditions and this isn't typically fixed in our contracts. It was more trying to clearly communicate that to you guys to help understand. But again, if the, if the schedule, we think the schedule is very conservative.
Okay.
So I don't see these being a great issue for you. Yes, we don't necessarily always have control. For example, when it comes to onsite expenses, some of it relates to the seasons we build things in. If we're doing something in winter versus a different season, it impacts what we need to do as far as just the cost to get it built. So some of that stuff, we provide strategy around it to make sure you're planning it the right way. And I don't see across what we, what's been communicated to date, any big risks there.
Okay. One other question. In your system, the way you do things, you're the construction manager. You hire then a general contractor and then the general contractor?
No.
No, you hire all your own subs?
We see that as, as a layer of extra spending that's really not needed. So that's where, when Dale's talking about lots of bid packages, that's our job is to manage all of that, have it divided up correctly, written correctly according to what they should do. And then we manage them directly.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Just a point of clarification because it is somewhat confusing. When we did these sheets, it was to get an idea of what the CMs thought general conditions could be. Because as we budgeted these documents, we had the flat fee, we had the flat percentage in the budget. And then we also had a monthly general conditions that Bray had come up with. And inside, you know, there was, the two of them combined equal all the money we've budgeted for these things. The expectation the district would have or that I would be recommending is that we would have our, you know, basically it's their number one, their, if you look at the bottom of their fee sheet, it's their number one, it's their number two, it's their number three, their number four, and number six. Because those seem to be transposed there, would be a locked-in, would be a locked-in fee with, you know, the onsite expenses being those things that are primarily allowances is what I, I think I saw them to be, which we would have contracts directly with contractors to cover those things. It wouldn't be things that we would be paying them as part of their fee. So what we'd be expecting is that their fee, or their all-in is all of their personnel, all of their job trailers, everything they have to do to manage the project. You know, cleaning up the site is something we're going to have to pay somebody else for. They may schedule it, but you know, just, just so we're on a clarifying point with this. So to me, it's, it's that, that 5.2 includes all those extra expenditures that wouldn't be through this contract or through CM. But we're just trying to get an idea of how we're, how we're sitting. So really, it looks to me like it would be closer to 3.87 is kind of, you know, just a rough, rough number, right around 3.87, somewhere around there for their actual all-in fee. Does that make sense?
Thank you for that clarification. That's what I was trying to say is that's not typical within our contract.
Yeah.
But we do help you manage those general conditions expenses. And we don't always even let them immediately into subcontractor contracts. We try to do it in a way that is the most strategic for our districts around that. So that, thank you for the clarification.
Because, you know, if the, we wouldn't expect to pay more for job trailer if the project ran long. But we would expect to pay more for portable toilets if the job ran long. Do you understand what I'm saying? So things that relate directly to their services with the job runs long, that should be covered in the thing. If it runs short, you know, I guess they win. But it's the, it's the, the other things, the allowances, it's just strictly saying about how much that's going to cost. It's completely outside of their contract.
And we were even saying beyond that, we would like to leave it where our personnel is still to the benefit of the district if it ends up being shortened time. So please do note this. I think that would be to your benefit.
Absolutely.
And we are comfortable with that.
Okay.
Okay, so I want to be clear because everybody's approaching this breakdown a little bit differently and has different numbers. But I understand the fixed fee part. That, that part I got in the pre-construction, you're at 1.44 and that's pretty consistent, I think, with what we've seen with the others we're interviewing, all right? But when it comes to the personnel and home office expense, that's something that you're looking for a fee of $2.15 million.
And that's what we're saying would, would scale with the time of the project.
Not to exceed that amount.
It's not to exceed that amount. But if it's less time, it would be less cost to the district is what we recommend.
Right, and give us some example of less time, less cost. Because this is where you were, of all the ones, even before we started sorting these from the original six down to the four, the most ambiguous on these hours and so forth. And so that's why I'm trying to get it cleared down because in some cases, it's quite a bit more than what the others are estimating.
One of the things like Brad mentioned with the phasing plan, if we can find other ways to make it go faster, that's our intent is to make it go faster. So if we can combine phases, it shortens the time. So it shortens the hours for field staff.
And right, and, and I guess where we're going with this slump sum fee is we want to get it to a point where if you get it done faster, great, you don't get paid any less. You don't get paid any more either, all right? And if it goes over, you don't get paid anymore and you don't... and you don't get paid any less. That's what we want is, I guess you're taking some risk in that, in that way, but we want to kind of know going in, this is what it's going to cost us. The one point, so this onsite expenses and all of these allowances, this is not what we're paying stall. This is just what is going to be paid.
Passed through.
Somebody, passed-through costs. And you're estimating between cleanup and dumpsters, $750,000. Is that right? That's how I'm reading that. And that's how, that's of, of the 1.34 million?
Yeah.
For onsite expenses. More than half of that is just cleaning the site. And another 225,000 for heating the new additions to the middle school and the high school?
During winter, yes. Just based on our experience of projects.
Can't you turn it down to 55 degrees when you're doing that?
I think too, this is where we tried to take a stab at it based on what was communicated to date.
Okay.
Same for personnel. If we're looking at complexity over time, we need to make sure it's supervised in an adequate way. I do think we're heavy on that and that it could come down. So if that's something where we're the team, I would definitely not hesitate to have a discussion with us about what makes the most sense, because we, knowing what we know to date, need to be conservative and smart about it. But I do think there's opportunity. And yes, these are, these are costs that are kind of based on historical analysis. Same thing, we need to come up with exactly what that's going to look like, and then we'll know a lot more about your general condition costs are going to be. But across, you know, across, across the amount of volume you're looking at to have, you know, general conditions estimated in this isn't atypical, I would just say.
Okay. And just like the onsite office expense, I know that you're saying it depends, and you gave an estimate based on the 29-month schedule for high school and 10 months for middle school.
Yeah.
That'd be 207,000 to have your offices and temporary trucks set up, and then postage and computers and so forth is all an estimate, but that is in addition to your fixed fee, right?
Yep, that's where, coming back to the bottom, that, those would be the costs that would come through us, yep.
All right.
Yes. We're at 45.
If I may, just a couple of quick questions. You talked about at Shakopee, the valving situation that you were helped to resolve. How did that come about? Who discovered that? Do you have people on staff, or do you have a third party that was helping you with that?
I'll be honest, it was one of our subcontractors that looked at it and said, hey, you know, this would be, really makes sense if they added some valves. And so Lee and I talked about it. We had a discussion with the superintendent. He said, yeah, that makes absolute sense.
Helped with the communication?
Yeah.
Okay. And then from a bid package perspective, you talked about lots of bid packages, if you will. And so prime contractor, and then you further split them up, or?
No. So in the, in the CM agency delivery method, each contract that gets awarded is a prime contract with the district. And so there may be 30 to 50 prime contractors working on this. We manage those contractors for you. If they were our subs, they would be all subcontracted to us. Here, they're all contracted directly with, to you, but we manage them.
Right. All right. With that, we have to end, because we promised equal time debt for everyone. Thank you for your time, for being here, and we'll take a five-minute recess. All right, we're back in order, and turn it over to Dr. Nick for our third candidate segment.
We're gonna, we're gonna go ahead and I'll just kind of give you a rundown. So as we, as we talked about last Thursday, or two Thursdays ago, it's a 45-minute time slot. We're holding people to it. We're within a minute, I think, on the first two. So the way it's set up is designed to have a 30-minute presentation by the firm, and then we want to really hold true to giving the board 15 minutes for question and answers and kind of an exchange there. And so with about five minutes left in the 30-minute portion, I'll just kind of put my hand up, tell you you got about five minutes, just to make sure that you're hitting everything that you want to hit on, and that everything's going the way, the way you want it to go. If, we'll kind of work on through this. I'll go ahead and get started. Are they connected, Tim? Okay. You don't have to worry, your time's not running yet.
Go ahead and get started when you're ready. And you're going to need to speak in the microphone and try to stay within three, four inches of the mic. I don't think the microphone is on. Should, the button should be up.
Is this working now?
Now, it's working.
Do you want me to start over, or did you hear enough of that?
No, we, we know you're Jerry Shea, so we got that.
If you want, I can do it a third time. Anyhow, for over 68 years, we've been the construction leader in Western Wisconsin. We consider this our home turf. Over the years, we've completed six different projects with the Hudson School District. Matter of fact, my brother Jim Shea was a superintendent on the Willow River Grade School project back in 2002. That's how long it's been since he's been here. Our project team consists of three owners, Principal of Market and Johnson, Kevin Renley, Jason Plon, Matt Faulkner. We've assembled a comprehensive team of school specialists, engineers, project managers, lead professionals, BIM specialists, and field professionals to complete your project. Even in a pure construction management role, which I know that you're looking for, we feel that the ability to self-perform that we do quite often on our projects, that brings a lot to the table, even if we're not going to self-perform on your project. That gives us the ability to help with systems selection, budgeting, scheduling, and detailing and quality control throughout the project of the main drivers of the project. Over 95% of our work is construction management, so we do this, and we do it well, and we do it often. Our number one focus is to be your advocate from the, from the very start through completion of the project. We're your eyes and ears to speak on the job site. Current projects in this area that we are managing right now is St. Croix County Nursing Home, Pierce County Jail Project, St. Croix Civic Auditorium, and the Osceola Village Hall Complex. We've worked with over 60 school districts in the Western Wisconsin area over the years.
My name is Jason Plon. I'm one of the principals of the firm. Like Jerry said, we always are engaged, always at least have one project principal involved. In this case, because of the size and the complexity of your project, Kevin and I, and actually Matt, are all going to kind of tag team it. So you're going to have three of the five owners of Market and Johnson directly involved. But most of my career's been involved on the front end of pre-refereendum services and working with Matt right now down in Melrose and Dorro, and just a very hands-on approach and partnered with Kevin here, so.
Gotcha. Kevin Renley, I would be principal in charge in the project, and we'll put together, we put together a nice presentation that'll kind of show the outline of all our roles and everything else.
Matt Faulkner, like you said, Matt's not with us today. He's got a decent excuse. Matt is on his way back from Hawaii, so he's, he's not on a day trip somewhere, but he was a little late to reschedule, and his, his wife was less than accommodating when the idea came up. So, but he's ready. He's coming back tonight. So if we are fortunate enough, I know there's a meeting tomorrow, we can be here tomorrow, so.
Randy LaFave, 20-year resident of Hudson, so obviously the passion to be involved in this project is overwhelming. I've got three kids, one in North Hudson and two in the high school. So I think I know it well. I have some inside consultants that can help me out.
Justin Geiser, I'm a project manager with Market and Johnson. I've been here for around 12 years and worked on a lot of school projects over the years.
I'm Tony Zimmermann. I'll be the high school superintendent, and I'll be the guy on site every day. Been with the company about 16 years. From what I've seen so far, it's real similar to a couple of projects I've done even recently, be it Menominee High School, Duran Middle School, Duran Elementary.
One other superintendent that's going to be part of the team is Dave Shyler. Dave's not with us today either, because we kind of wanted to keep it to the six, so I can be a little bit more active. But Dave's going to be on site. Dave's a, a project manager, a project superintendent that worked with Justin in the Chippewa Falls School District, which is really similar to the middle school project that you have. And he's just finished up the new elementary school in Altoona, so a very strong onsite presence for the middle school. Our team, every project up here, I mean, this is not an exhaustive list, but every one of us have been part of this. Schools is what we've done in all of our careers for a long time. A lot of similarities. We're going to get into a lot of those similar projects. But when we put together the project team, which is really, at the end of the day, the people that you're hiring is really the driver in any successful project, we think we've kind of put together, and I think for our firm, we put together the team, a good combination of ownership, strong school experience, project, structural engineer, lead credited professionals. So hopefully, we got the winning combination for you.
Here's a little brief org chart of our proposed team. Like Jason said, I know we brought it out, it's very important for Market and Johnson. They have ownerships and partner, a part of the project. So both Jason and I will be principals in charge on the job. What that means is we'll, we'll see the project from the very beginning to the end. We'll have executive meetings throughout the project, work with our project managers and staff, help see the project done.
Again, I'm Justin Geiser. I'll be the project manager at the middle school project, and working with me would be Dave Shyler. Again, like Jason said, he's, he's just finishing up Altoona project. What, what are, what would the, what would we be working on would be, I'd be in charge of the budgets upfront, overall schedules and phasing plans, be in charge of the bidding, and just overall project management throughout the course of the job. Dave's job is typically the day-to-day stuff, day-to-day schedules, day-to-day communication with subcontractors and owners, and quality control is a big item that Dave would be working on, and safety via school, personnel, students, or job site.
And as Kevin mentioned, I'll be running the high school. I'll be the project manager on that, joined by Tony. We'll have a couple of other people yet to be named on the site, whether it be foremen or project engineers. It's a complex project. It's going to be a multi-phase effort. Also be assisting Justin with the middle school in the terms of just logistics and knowledge of the facility. As I've been a resident here, it's nice to team up on that.
It's also nice to have a little bit of overlap if there's vacations or whatever is going on, that we've kind of got a two-headed monster client going. It's always up to date. Real quickly, a bunch of our project experience, you know, a couple of the most recent ones that are real similar, the Menominee Middle School or High School that Tony just referenced, you know, 90,000 square foot remodel, 200,000 square feet of mechanical remodeling done over that time period, 45,000 square foot addition. Spooner High School, 165,000 square feet. Eau Claire Memorial High School was a 200,000 square foot remodeling project, very similar to the remodeling portion of your high school project.
Also up there is John Marshall High School in Rochester. Remodeled that back, I think it was 08, 09, about 200,000 square feet of remodeling. Basically, the only thing we didn't touch was the auditorium. So two football fields, seven tennis court, or, yeah, tennis courts, just about, you name it, two and a half years.
A couple others. Southfield Elementary, which is another project Justin and Dave Shyler worked on together, really similar, 30,000 square foot addition of the elementary school, remodeling of the, the school as well. So it's real similar to the middle school project, so that's kind of how we line those guys up. The other picture here, UW River Falls, hopefully maybe some of you folks have been through that, but that's our new student union, 143,000 square feet of lead platinum certifiable project. White Hall, we just finished, again, real similar to the middle school, major addition and remodeling. The Menominee Field House there that is the bottom right-hand corner. Couple of quick ones up here, as it relates back to your guys' project, the Stout Football Complex. That was kind of the first synthetic outdoor football field in Western Wisconsin. So we did that project and the weight room, fitness center, all that part of that. The auditorium, we've done tons and tons of auditoriums, but the auditorium that you see there is part of the new 165,000 square foot new high school at Spooner.
Also up there is Blackwater Falls London Center. We built a, about a $25 million project with Field House, really neat project, so.
The last one up there is kind of related but unrelated. It's not a school. It's the new Confluence Center in downtown Eau Claire. It's a $90 million public-private partnership between us and University of Wisconsin Eau Claire. The, the unique thing there is it's a state-of-the-art performing arts center. So there's three auditoriums, theaters. So when you're talking about be able to update your auditorium, we're working with probably one of the biggest, most state-of-the-art projects at Western Wisconsin, and that round is going to be happening. So a little bit about us and our experience.
So Justin and Randy are going to get into a little bit of how we run the job as a construction manager. We kind of, I'm going to talk a little bit about some of the highlights of the, the things that make a, a job successful and, and basically our approach to the job. And I think the way to look at it is at the heart of it is communication. We strive, we're really good, strong communicators. Once we define the project goals, we'll work with the Braves team on developing the budgets, keeping, marrying the plans to the budget. We'll work on alternative solutions, designs, look at cost, life, lifecycle analysis, and really dig into the plans and specs. So when we get to bid day, there are no, there's no surprises. Likewise, we'll, we'll dive in a little bit more into how we go about bidding the job, the work categories we create. And like Jerry said, one of the strengths we feel that we bring to the team that is our biggest asset is we do self-perform a lot of work day-to-day. So we, we are the construction experts. We, we know what we're doing. We know what things cost, because we do, we self-perform it on a lot of our projects, so. And likewise, Tony will talk a little bit about how we drive schedules and oversee the project.
All right. I'll start by talking about budgeting first. During the schematic and design phase, we continually budget the project. We want to be involved in the design meetings on a, on a daily basis. And anything that comes up in those processes, we, we analyze, you know, right away. We use our experience to help make recommendations on building envelope, materials and systems within the building. This is especially important with the dynamics of a remodel, like what we have here. And, and like everybody's been saying, due to the fact that we self-perform, we have a really accurate database for budgeting, along with our wide range of experience of Western Wisconsin projects, we can really use that database to help, help budget the project. As well as coming up with options, again, ranging from building envelope to structural systems, to flooring, to roofs, mechanical, electrical systems. And what we really want to do is, is tailor the project to what the, what the district needs and wants are. And the goal here is really to enhance the district's opportunities and really get the biggest bang for the buck during the project. So that's kind of just in a nutshell what we do on budgeting. We can answer more questions when we get to that phase. As far as the bidding process?
Just wait, Jen. The document that Kevin passed out, the one that's kind of colored like a red and green and stop and go light, is an example of our value engineering. So as you go through these projects, there's going to just be an infinite amount of opportunities, you know, to look at different options, different methods, different means, different materials. And so that sheet kind of shows on a recent project, about $4 million, the potential savings that we helped develop with, with the architect, just for the owner to go through, yeah, that makes sense, no, that doesn't make sense. But our role really is to make sure that we kind of uncover all those stones. We're looking for all the potential cost savings ideas, because even though you can kind of split hairs and come up with the right solution, if we can save some money and everybody's happy with it, starting with the architect and the operation, if from the district's point of view, if we can solve the same solution for less money, we should. And it's just smart business, right? So our role is really to kind of help create that list with accurate costing data and allow that shopping list to be kind of a starting point for you guys as you go through your decision-making process.
Moving on to bidding. Like Jerry had mentioned earlier, we have a wide range of projects in this area alone, and also throughout Western Wisconsin. So we have a lot of relationships, which helps create bidding opportunities in this area. These relationships help, help our knowledge of the local subcontractors and contractors, and really helps us build a really successful team, which is extremely important on remodel projects and existing facilities. And I think Kevin's going to hit on that a little bit later. We have a lot of flexibility to create work categories that are customized to the, the project at hand. We can help take into account schedule and local subcontractors' capabilities, overall scope of work, and really maximize the opportunities of all the local contractors by doing that. Really, we really would like to keep the money in Western Wisconsin. We feel that's important to, to the local school district. We do have some examples of what, kind of what you get on bid day. I don't know if we got the bid book here, but if you want to hold that up, Kevin?
Yep.
So I'll pass around- So I'll pass around a bid book, this is basically at the end of bidding documents, we'll create work categories like Justin mentioned. This is a sample of all the bids we receive, individual work categories, like we talked about, very open book process, the owners come in during bid day, I'll pass it around, you guys leave with a sample book, you see all the vendors, everybody who bid, each and every category. We spend a lot of time on these categories because we want to make sure that they're seamless and they don't have a lot of holes, so I'll pass this around.
That's actually volume one, I think of two volumes on that project, so you can see, we've split up the project into a lot of categories, which saves you guys money and gives you as much choices throughout the process. And again, like Kevin said, it's completely open book, we'll review all the bids with the district, and you know, when it's all said and done, we'll leave you with the books, we'll leave you with electronic copies of it. I think we've had a lot of instances where it's proven to save a lot of money at the end of the day and build a successful team, and I think we've had a lot of success with that approach.
All right, we'll start, we'll touch base on project safety. You know, to really have an effective safety program, it's more than just having policies that you try and enforce. I mean, you really have to have a company, you know, philosophy that they not only support but truly believe in. It creates like a culture, a safety culture, that's easily bought into by all the employees. And it's one of the things I'm proud, working with Mark and Johnson, is they made a commitment to that, and they really value their employees and everybody on site's health and safety above all else. As far as on a day-to-day basis onsite, I mean, it's from the very beginning, I mean, we'll lay out our expectations of safety and compliance to everybody, you know, before the job even starts. Every day, it begins with a mandatory safety huddle that's documented, where you go over not only each group's scope of work that day and potential, you know, exposure to dangers, but the site on a whole, so everybody knows what everybody else is doing, make sure everybody has the safety equipment they need, the information, and they're all competent. Every foreman meeting, every progress meeting we have weekly begins with safety, any concerns, what's coming up, but exposures are necessary. Once a month, I'll have a complete onsite safety meeting that'll go over all safety concerns and, you know, involvement in these meetings is encouraged. And then I'll also have full site, you know, site-specific meetings for any, you know, large exposure activities, critical picks, stuff like that. And there are policies and they are enforced and they're, you know, they're uncompromisable, I mean, they'll be strict. You know, if you don't comply to our safety, you know, it'll go from verbal and written warnings to suspensions, determinations, as no one's going to be put at risk. We'll move on to quality control. Once again, that starts at the beginning, it's reviewing the plans, the specs, the submittals, the shop drawings, make sure, you know, all the submittals match the specifications, match the plans, looking at them individually and as a group, making sure that they make sense for you, that they're, through our experience in managing and self-performing and our subcontractors and vendors' experience, that there isn't a better route or a better product or a better installation, the way everything has to integrate together. As far as subcontractors go, you know, it's important to be, have clear expectations and controls, it's essential. But harmony's pretty important too. I mean, they have to work fluently within the CM's expectations, but also harmoniously with each other. I mean, I truly believe everybody, every prime contractor has to be successful for the project on a whole to be successful. And, you know, they're talented professionals too, and to get the most out of them, you need to use them that way, they're an asset. I try and, I try to be an asset to them, you know, I'm a source of information, decision-making, you know, I try and make their job easier, especially with their offices. If they're having problems meeting my expectations, be it material acquisition, manpower, you know, I let them know, I can call your office in a different manner than you can. Schedule, you know, driving the schedule, you know, with the exception of safety, schedule is the most critical component. I mean, everything else, be it budget, profit, everything's manipulated, compromised to hold set schedule. You know, as a management team, a project on schedule isn't enough, you know, you always have to try and exceed it. You try, you know, through efficiencies, crew size, schedule overlapping, start and stop dates to, you know, eke out another week, you get ahead when you can, especially with the remodel, because surprises are going to happen, and sooner or later, you'll need that time. And if you don't, I've never had any complaints for completing early. Closeout, I think that's something that, you know, doesn't get stressed enough, especially in the anticipation of beginning a project, but it's something you need to stay on top of. In every progress meeting, we will finish with some degree of stress on closeout. Every week, I expect my subcontractors to go through and review and update as-built drawings, so especially at a remodel, because everything has to be documented. Then the stress and the degree in which we talk about it increases as we go through the project, so that when we get to the end of the job, you know, owner training, O and M's, attic stock, all that stuff is already pre-planned, it's effortless, it's smooth. And the transition to completion and turnover is not painstaking, and as it's the last thing, it's nice to end on a professional, successful note.
All right, so what you see up here is a plan we put together of what we perceive as the project. This is not, I'm sorry, this is not in stone, we're just trying to portray what we think is, what we believe is the best route at this moment in time. So what we've done with the middle school here is, Justin and I have really put a lot of thought in this as to, one, student and faculty safety, how do we ensure that we do this job in the safest manner we can? There are a lot of activities around, whether it's baseball in the evenings, track in the evenings, or the backpackers in the summer, there's a lot of things going on in this school. This job is, in terms of phasing, it's pretty simple, but there are some complexities with the schedule that I think Justin's going to review here in a moment.
Yeah, like Randy said, it's a tight site, it's a little, it's a little interesting because the addition is kind of, cuts across from the main entry, so we obviously need to figure out a way to keep the main entry access open and usable throughout the course of the project, which is important. The other important thing on a project like this is really minimize the construction impact on the school, whether it's students, staff, et cetera. And so there's a lot of different ways to look at the overall schedule. You know, we know that this is an important project of the district and you guys want to show the community, you want to get going. What we really want to do is really dive into the details, once we're given the opportunity, and figure out, you know, what the best time to start is, based on bidding documents and whatnot, and what has to happen onsite, whether it's soil corrections, site work, and how we can really fit that into the schedule the best in terms of winter construction and things like that. So what we really want to do is work the schedule backwards, so that the start time, you know, lines up really well with, you know, the structure, so that it really minimizes the time onsite and it's a good flow of construction.
And as, you know, as with the high school, it's really exciting for the community, it's exciting for all of us to be part of it, but that excitement wears off pretty fast when you start getting to multiple phases and you see a lot of construction activity and fences going up. So we try to make this as painless as possible going through it and trying to be the best stewards of your money. So on the high school, again, this is more of the complex project. I don't have to remind everybody in this room that parking onsite is already a problem, it's going to be a problem during construction, and how we address that is really going to be a collaborative effort to, whether we utilize St. Patrick's Church, continually use that, we talk to the city about how we're going to get traffic in and out there safely. There are a lot of things to discuss. As we, as the schedule shows and what the next side will be, phase one is still the phase one, it's still the stadium, the addition, and all the parking lots. We feel the best thing for this project, at this point, again, from this perspective, is to get all the parking lots, get the stadium, get everything done for the school year of 17, 18, so that it can be operational. Little bit of frustration probably early on in the job in the spring, but I think it'll pay off towards the end of summer, when school's back in session, everything's back in order. The balance of this, for the schedule, really was driven a little bit from conversations we were talking about in our walkthrough, understanding that some of the mechanical, electrical systems are going to be extensively, you know, removed and replaced. And the initial phasing was kind of scattered about, and there's, I'm sure, good reasons for that, but we feel there's maybe a better way of doing that. Again, flexibility here, but we think that we're proposing a different alternative with the information we have, that can not necessarily minimize the schedule at the long end, but it does hopefully lessen the impact of the school, the students, the faculty of moving people around. Again, we're trying to do this in a, there's going to be construction noise and activities with the school, and it's already enough, hard enough to get kids' attention, I really don't, I can deal with that, so we're trying to help with everything we can.
I think one thing to add to that before we move on is, what we really want to do is tailor the phasing plan to work well with the mechanical, electrical system, so that it's a smooth flow between phases, so that one area finishes complete and we don't have to go back through it, and so we can really work with the designers on making sure that goes smoothly.
And we've really tried to incorporate on phase three, the, probably the bigger, next bigger one, try to encapsulate all the gym, get the track built, so it's all done at the same time. It's going to be really difficult to build it in two parts, we think we have a proposal on that. And then the other part of it is the auditorium, that's the other big part of the referendum, that having kids through choir, I can understand the need for it and the space that's required. So we went ahead and combined all the choir, the orchestra, the band, and the auditorium together in the phase, because again, less disruption later down the road incorporated all together. But disclaimer again, this is a flexible plan, just wanted to present something that we were thinking of all options at this point.
We did hand out schedules, by the way, if anybody can actually read any of this information up there, you get bonus points at the end, but Kevin did hand out schedules for both the middle school and the high school projects earlier.
So Randy and Justin talked a little bit about our approach and marrying the plans to the budget and how we go about things. One item we probably didn't stress enough is step six, after we get through the bid documents, we really know, we feel we have a great knowledge of the subcontractor base around here, and a lot of times it's good, you're as good as the people that you surround yourself with, so we'll work with the subcontractors, the low ones, to get the right team, the A-team, so to speak, on board, and we really think we can bring value there. Ultimately, through the whole process, we feel we can bring value by partnering with Bray, you know, looking at design options, alternatives, value engineering selections, where we can save and offset our fee with the project.
And if I could add on the subcontractor market and the bidding piece, we have the luxury here in this area that we have the horsepower if need be with the cities, a lot of those contractors, and we also have the great local market that we all know here. So it's really a great balance to work the two together and try and figure out the best way to utilize the project.
I know you didn't ask, but my wife's a teacher and Justin's wife's a teacher, and we do lots and lots of schools, and, you know, I think the one really, really rewarding thing that we do day in and day out when we're building schools is it's really a community function, right? And so I always talk about a little bit of that at every school interview, because it really should be a celebration between you, the administrative team and district, and the project team, and more importantly, with the community. So there isn't a cookie canner kind of approach that we take, but we do want to get the community involved. And it starts with the bid packages, you know, trying to get local subcontractors involved, but then it goes to the greater community as a whole, and we've done everything you can think of, and we'll work with you guys to develop that, but whether it's tours with key clubs, if it's topping off parties, if it's, hey, we're getting something, you know, the gym's done, and let's get people in while it's safe, but still a construction zone, get people excited. We do a lot with the kids, elementary school kids are even more entertaining when you get them involved, and obviously, most of your stuff's at the high school, but there's a lot of opportunity, and a lot of times people get so focused on costs and budget and schedule and design and just the brick and mortar part, they forget the fact that this is a community project, right? And so we want to celebrate that with the community as well, and so we'll work closely with you on that. I know our time's running towards the end here, I'm assuming there's going to be some questions on fees, so maybe I'll leave the summary of the fees here, because I'm guessing we'll probably spend some time there, and we'll wrap it up with just the kind of the quick why Mark and Johnson. We've talked a lot about a lot of these things, but at the end of the day, this is our home turf, I mean, literally with Randy right here, but western Wisconsin is our home, and we have 350 field professionals that live in the area. We really, really think that that knowledge base is unique in the fact that we can become your problem solver, remodels are going to be messy, and our knowledge base, by having the ability to do concrete masonry, studs and drywall, demo, rough and finished carpentry, steel erection, all that stuff, even though we won't be doing it on your job, you're going to get the benefit of having all that knowledge base. We are dedicated to keeping it local, the more money we can keep right here in St. Croix Colony in western Wisconsin, the better. I think at the end of the day, we did get the luxury of watching all the architects' interviews, and Matt, you did a great job, as always, and, you know, Matt, I think we're working together at Melrose and Dora, and I think at the end of the day, the part of the things that's really exciting is, I think there's a lot of similarities between Bray and their approach, Mark and Johnson, and our approach. I think we're not family, but we're really kind of family, culture companies, we are, what you see is what you get, you get three owners up here, we are going to be here day in and day out. It's not smoke and mirrors, this isn't, hey, let's bring the guys up with suits and ties to the interview and show ownership excitement at the beginning, and then they're gone to the next big project, you know, tomorrow. It is passionate, this is our bread and butter right here, so we are very, very committed to it, and we'll do everything we can to make sure that this is a good, solid, successful project for the Hudson School District and community.
All right, thanks for that presentation, now do we have any questions from board members?
Mr. President.
Yes.
Rob. So, you know, the construction management, of course, is important to us, there is a reason why we split the architecture from the construction management piece. If you were offered the construction manager role, would you commit to not self-performing your bidding work?
Yeah, according to the RFP, we're under the assumption right now that we do not have that ability, so we are submitting right now purely as a CM agent. Now, to flip the question back to you, if we find that there's a benefit to bidding it, we certainly would welcome that opportunity as well, but no, today we're coming in with a full knowledge that we are interviewing to be your CM advocate.
Pierce Colony Jail, we are seeing. I was going to ask that question with that self-perform, because you started off the presentation saying that's a big advantage that you do that.
It is a big advantage from the standpoint of a knowledge base, right? So we bring that working knowledge compared to most contractors that don't have that ability, but we are under the premise, we are not self-performing.
What's your biggest project where you acted as the construction manager, but did not self-perform, did not have the option of self-perform?
La Crosse Colony Jail was recent, Pierce Colony Jail. So, you know, if we go back and 95% of our work is CM, is probably 30% CM agent and 60% construction manager at risk, where we do have the ability to bid on that project, on the projects. When we do do those, it's a very public bidding process and we don't need to belabor that, but so there...
I noticed, yeah, in this booklet that you passed around, the Spooner Project, you were at risk.
We were at risk.
You did bid several aspects to this project, and you did not recommend yourself several times, more times than not, in fact.
Yeah, in that case, they had a bid market and it went fantastic, and they got some bids, it kind of proves that our bidding process, again, not what you guys are asking for tonight, but our bidding process needs to be very straightforward, very open, very honest, very ethical. Somebody beats us, they beat us, and if they're qualified and they've got a solid bid and they've got all their i's dotted and t's crossed, they earn that work, and that, you know, as a role, you know, as an owner advocate, they deserve that.
And then I saw in one of the examples here, I can't remember, I think it was the architectural woodwork, contract 6B area, and in that one, you did not recommend the low bid, you recommended something that was higher. In what instances would you recommend subcontractor, well, in this case, it's a contractor, because we're prime with them, but when would you recommend a contractor who didn't necessarily have the lowest bid? What would you be looking for?
You know, there's a number of different scenarios there, it starts with making sure they have a complete bid. If we have history with them and there's a safety history that's positive or negative, if there's a schedule history that, especially with the school, we're on a tight timeframe, if they got a history of not bidding, I think it's our role as your construction manager to inform you of that, so we know what risks we have going into it. If there's a history of quality issues, if there's a financial... If there's a, a history of quality issues, if there's a financial concern, those are all components that go in, so we'll, before we award things, we'll have kind of vented all those potential risks out, especially the, the financial component of things, over the long, last, what, ten years or so, we've seen a lot of contractors that maybe thought they're financially sound, but when you dig into it, aren't, and weren't, and, you know, those are risks that the school district doesn't want to have, the community certainly doesn't want to take on, and, and our job is to make sure that you're informed during that awarding process.
And, and with that in mind about making sure that you have your bid is complete, are you confident that the number that you've proposed to us is a number that you will not exceed?
Yeah, on our, our fee and our lump sum general conditions, we've gone through it and, and we're comfortable with it, yes.
All right. Other board members?
Mr. President? So I'm clear, you're the general contractor, you do the bidding to the subs, you do not hire another general, then they do the bidding, correct?
Well, we, we're the construction manager, there's two approaches to kind of the bidding process, the easy way is to, to work with the architect and design a general bidder, you know, a general contractor bid package, and then maybe some major subcontractor primes, right, the mechanical, electrical, plumbing, and maybe you have four, or five, or six big categories. We would typically take the approach, and there, there may be some reason for that on a project, but we would more take the approach that you saw at Spooner, where we break it up into dozens of bid packages.
Okay.
Customized to the regions, so that we can maximize the opportunity for local contractors, get the lowest bid for you in all of those areas, so that you're saving money, creating more opportunities. In Western Wisconsin, unfortunately, there's, there's not a ton of contractors that can handle seventy-seven million if that was the bid, but by breaking it up, we create opportunities, you know, sometimes we'll even get it down to concrete, you know, the concrete package might be too big for a firm, but we maybe break it down to the concrete package, plus exterior concrete would be a, a separate bid package, so we could have a smaller firm doing sidewalk curb and gutter type of thing.
Okay, and as Jamie mentioned, the price that you're talking here is one hundred percent of the cost, one hundred percent, we're not going to have surprises, it's not going to go over. I noticed in your package, you talked about the number of months that are included in this, what if it takes a month longer than you're projecting?
Well, I, I think whoever drafted the RFP purposely did that, right, so that we're kind of at risk there, so we've all based it on the twenty-seven month timeframe for the high school, six months for the middle school. Our goal, working with Bray, obviously, is to...
Get it done be su- before that?
Get it done sooner, big goal. But if it goes over, that is kind of the beauty of the lump sum, it's a kind of a risk reward thing, right? If, if we do a great job, and we get in a week, two weeks, a month earlier, there is a little bit of financial reward compared to a cost plus base.
Right, you keep the, you keep the reward, and if it goes over, we don't pay you.
Correct.
Got it, and one other thing I want to say before I'm done talking here, I've been in the Lundt Community Center, you're talking about the new one?
Yeah.
Were you the, the construction manager on that, or the contractor?
Bold.
Or both? That is a phenomenal facility, that is absolutely gorgeous.
And we didn't even pay you to say that, right?
No! I didn't even know you did it.
We should have had you talking earlier.
Who was the architect?
Zimmerman Architects.
Ah, that is, is outstanding project.
Yeah, we're, we're really, as a firm, we're very proud of it, it's a, I mean, what the Lundt family did for the community is amazing.
They are.
Yeah.
Overall, speaking of being project on time, what's your record with getting projects done on time, particularly school projects, because of our school calendars and so forth?
We've never missed a school day, there's, it's really not even an option, I mean, school's starting one way or the other, and so there's, there's opportunities, sometimes there's a little bit of schedule flexibility, I know Justin down at Durand, you know, they, they postpone and start it a week later type of thing, but ahead of time, knowing things that kind of maximizes the construction schedule part of things, but even the most complex projects, John Marshall, we've never missed a schedule.
What I was going to say is, John Marshall High School, we remodeled, out of the two-hundred-thousand, we remodeled a hundred thousand during the summer. In one summer, so thirteen weeks means thirteen weeks means thirteen weeks, there's not, there's option A, get done, option B, get done, kind of deal.
And, you know, if I could add, the, the beauty of us working with you as a team, we're analyzing that risk, the, the schedule's a risk, so we try to collaborate the phases, so that they can be done successfully, identify things that are going to be maybe an issue or concern, make sure we allow enough time for those.
May I ask a question?
Yeah, go ahead, Rob.
Yeah, and so the value engineering sheet that you were kind enough to pass out, is this in concert with your contractors, do you guys have electrical, mechanical engineering on staff for?
No.
How does this come about? You can, you develop.
That actually came from a hospital down in Prairie Sheen, and that was at an earlier phase, where we, we actually had, we did have some mechanical help onboard, a specialist, but most of those ideas come from our team, our history, the cost, that, that particular example, I'm, is near and dear to my heart, I'm very proud of, because at the end of the day, on, what was it, like, tw- thirty-six million or something like that, we were within a hundred thousand dollars after bid day, to the good, so that's, that's how close we got with that value engineering process, so, very detailed cost estimate. Oh, yeah, and the red, yellow, green was not because of Christmas, it was the, our kind of our stop and go light, red means, please don't ever bring that up again, green's like, that's a great idea, yellow's like, eh, if we need the money, we'll get it, so.
I think sometimes the, the bad negative rap on value engineering is that you think you're doing it to cheapen a building, or cheapen a project, and to, you know, lower costs, because you have budget issues, and really, a good construction manager working with a good architectural firm, those are just good opportunities. There may be a time on projects that you run into budget issues, and it's required, but your job as a construction manager is to be doing that from day one, because if you can, if you could do A or B, and at the end of the day, you're not going to know the difference between A and B, and, you know, A's ten thousand dollars and B's fifty thousand dollars, you as an owner should know that, and you should be able to say, no, we want to pay ten thousand, not fifty thou, or vice versa, we want to pay fifty, for whatever reason, because of lifecycle payback, especially mechanical systems, if there's efficiencies from an operational standpoint, structural, but at the end of the day, that doesn't change your overall budget, so now if we spent forty grand as a premium here, because some operational savings in the future, we need to look at how we're going to save forty thousand dollars to make that budget, you know, in harmony again.
Question on expertise in your capacity, one, do you have an MEP engineer onboard in-house, and two, do you get the, just answer that question first, and I'll follow up.
We, we do not have mechanical, electrical, engineering in-house, and Bray's, that'll fall under theirs, what is frequent, though, as their design gets developed, we do have some relationships with a number of subcontractors, and they'll help bring some of that, so they'll help analyze, if need be, if it gets really, really complicated, we do have a third-party expert that we do partner with frequently, but we do not have that in-house, no.
All right, and, but you have experience working with Bray?
Oh, yeah.
And you feel you got the capacity to handle this project with all your other projects that you go, have going on over the next two and a half, three years?
Yeah. Well, we cleared, we cleared our schedule for tomorrow, hoping that we're at a, at a kickoff meeting, so, yeah, no.
Okay.
That, you know, that's the one thing, when we talk about the right-sized firm, is we are very careful not to take on too much work, because at the end of the day, we do want to be able to have the ownership be directly involved, and make sure these guys do have enough time, and especially on a project that has as much of potential risk, on this big a remodeling of a school, we really want to make sure we have enough time to dedicate to it.
Well, you had an impressive list of schools, all right, but I was just wondering, like, percentage-wise, what's your annual revenue, and then how does it split with education versus non-education, if you know that?
We typically, right now, are between two-hundred-and-thirty and two-hundred-and-fifty million dollars annually, and, you know, of that, I guess it's been a while since I've broken it down, but it's probably, right now, especially because of the boom, it's probably sixty or sixty-five, seventy percent school-related, and then we do a lot of hospital work, and then a little bit of everything else kind of thing, so schools, schools and hospitals have been our predominant markets since we were established in nineteen forty-eight.
So around two-hundred-and-fifty million annually?
Correct.
And sixty percent plus would be schools?
Yep.
All right. Any other questions, then, and how we doing time-wise, we still have a minute and a half? All right? Anything else that you wanted to add, or other?
I was just going to say, ahead of schedule.
Yeah, there you go.
We got, we got the timer going here, too.
No, I'd, I'd tell you what, I commend the board, I think the RFP was well-written, we really appreciate the opportunity to come in, it's been well thought out, I think your spreadsheet really kind of narrowed it down, I don't know if there's any specific questions, I try to be somewhat organized on there.
Well, you saw our proposed contract, you don't have any problem with it?
No, no, it's a well-written contract.
Okay.
AI could probably copy and, and use that. Not to, not to get the architects, but...
All right, very good, well, thank you very much for your time, thanks for being on time.
Thank you.
We'll go for a five-minute recess. Come back to order, and ready for our next interview, and turn it over to Dr. Nick to explain the process.
All right, just kind of go through a couple things, as we talked about, about a week and a half ago, we have forty-five minutes aside, we've been holding everybody to within about a minute of that, and so, the way that'll break out is you'll have the thirty-minute presentation, and so I will just kind of give you a hand-up at five minutes left in the presentation, because we want to make sure that the board has a full fifteen minutes to ask questions and answers, and try to really, really stick to that schedule, and then if you, we'll kind of, I guess, go from there, I, I don't have anything else, so go ahead.
Okay. Thank you, I thank everyone for the opportunity to interview, we'll introduce ourselves quickly, so you know our roles and the team, Gary will be flipping through the PowerPoint behind us, and I'll get going right away. Again, my name's John Hewnig with Crowe's Anderson, I've been with K for twenty-one years now, and in that twenty-one years, ninety-five percent of my time is in the K-12 construction industry, industry, and a majority of it is construction management as an agent also. My role will be as a project director, and I will be very involved in pre-construction efforts, and keeping an eye as we go through construction.
I'm Gary Ziffel, senior project manager for the project, really excited to be here, so, I have two daughters that go to the dis- the school district here, so excited to have an opportunity to be a part of it. Nineteen years of construction experience, solely building schools as a construction management agent, but yeah.
My name is Dustin Phillips, I'm, I'll hopefully be the project manager, and I'd thank you again for the opportunity, I'll be the main point of contact for onsite questions or, or issues that may come up, I'll be here on a day-to-day basis, working hand-in-hand with our superintendent Jeff.
Evening, my name's Jeff Moore, I'll be the site superintendent for your project, I've been with K for twenty-four years, I believe, thir- over thirty years of experience, and worked multiple jobs, K-12, to retail, to just about just everything, so.
I'm Mike Spence, I'm director of quality at Crowe's Anderson.
Excuse me, Mike, you might want to pull the microphone closer to you, it works best at about four inches away, so.
Okay, good, good afternoon, my name is Mike Spence, I'm director of quality at Crowe's Anderson, I really provide support to Dustin and Jeff and the entire team in the area of building technology, building science, and processes to really ensure we do it right the first time.
And I'm Matt Stringfellow, I'm the MEP Systems Coordinator, focusing on the mechanical and electrical engineering systems for the project, I have over twenty-two years' experience working as a design consultant, mechanical engineer, prior to coming to K, I also spent nine years working for a large institutional owner, so I'm really bringing the design and an owner's focus to the project, focusing on the engineering systems.
I'm going to introduce some other team members that are going to be an important role, Jason Retmeister will be another project manager, supporting us in the project, Andy Thompson, Jesse's the other field superintendent, and Jeff will talk about the roles of the field superintendent, Audi Miller is our in-house cost estimator in charge of estimating, we have Heather, who's our BIM specialist, which is helping with 3D modeling, as a project comes together, to help us understand the project together, how it goes together better, Jim Bergen's a general superintendent, he'll assist Jeff and Jesse throughout construction periodically, and then Jay is in charge of safety. I won't spend much time in the next page, this is just an org chart showing you how our team comes together, and our roles and responsibility for each team member, but one important part in the star, so we have twelve employees involved in your project, from pre-construction to post-construction, we have twenty-five thousand hours that are in our fee or our site services that we've included, that we've submitted to you, and once we get to the fee section of our interview, Gary will talk more about that. A little bit more about Crowe's Anderson and us as a construction manager, we are ranked number eight nationally by building, design, and construction, we've done over a billion dollars in construction management as an agent experience, the local understanding of the construction market, I mean, just currently around the area from Ellsworth to Baldwin to Balsam Lake to Stillwater to Woodbury, just a close proximity, we're doing a lot of work right now, so we have a really good understanding of the local market. Gary talked about a local resident, I live less than ten, well, West Lakeland, from Baldwin, Wisconsin originally, so don't hold that against me, but I live in West Lakeland now, Dustin's twenty minutes away, Jeff Moore's twenty minutes away, and the, living in the Amory area, so we are local, and we do understand the market, and we're an experienced team, and the team that we have here will be finishing up Stillwater on Jeff's portion and Dustin, and they will be on your job. So, moving into the next slide, and I'll talk about that a little bit more, these are just a few projects that are very, very similar to yours. Maple Northwestern up east of Superior, Stillwater Schools is a hundred-million-dollar project that this team is doing, and others, Spring Lake Park Schools is over a hundred million dollars, Wayzata Public Schools over a hundred million, Waconia over a hundred million, South Wash over, and Edina, all of these are repeat clients, and they're all very current projects, and they're all CM as an agent also, so I thought it was important to talk about those.
I'll talk a little bit of construction services, and I'm not going to spend a lot of time on this slide, we could spend thirty minutes on this slide, but I know you guys had a long night, and, but if there are any questions specific, I mean, feel free to raise them now, but this is what we kind of use as a CMA model, I mean, we believe you guys are doing the right thing by bringing on a, a construction manager early to work with the architect, that allows us on the, on the pre-construction side, to, to work with Bray, to understand, you know, the progress of the drawings, we do a lot of different variations of an estimate, we call it kind of a living estimate, it's not just an SD estimate, a design development estimate, I mean, we're, we're constantly updating that estimate based on the information that we're getting from Bray. So we also help with the phasing side of it, on the pre-construction side, just understanding, again, and we'll touch on that on a couple later slides, but working early on to understand that schedule in that phase with the district and the staff.
And I'm just going to add one more thing, again, it's about bringing all phases in together to get the best solution, I mean, post-construction starts early in pre-construction when you start planning, there's even things on the exterior walls, we were talking about it in the other room, on Stillwater, do we use masonry or pre-cast, and you're going to have the same question on your building if you haven't figured it out already, or Bray hasn't, the, we went, Stillwater went with pre-cast and saved significant schedule and over a quarter million dollars in savings through the bidding process, but that was a conscious decision as a team, with the architect and the owner, the pros and cons of products, so there's, that's a tip of the iceberg of some things that are going to happen in pre-construction.
There's a large amount of work that goes into the bidding process, and just as Gary said, that starts early, a lot of the items that you see up on the screen right now are a lot of items that we start working with Hudson School District and Bray Architects through the SD and DD phases of the project, to ensure that by the time these, these projects are ready to go on the street, that it's very clear to the bidders what you're proposing on. Some of the things I'd like to touch base on that are, are very important to the project, I mean, you want a work scope set, we'll be bidding on, as your construction manager, it's very important that we make sure that Hudson School District gets the best value for their dollar, we do that by making sure that we don't hire a general contractor that then goes in terms and hires other contractors underneath them, and then they end up managing the work, that is our job as your construction manager. What we would do on a job of this size is probably expect a little forty to fifty individual work scopes.
The button's got to be pushed.
There we go.
That means, that means that we would have a separate masonry package, concrete package, steel material package, steel erection package, a separate carpet person from a separate tile person, to ensure that any cost savings is going back to the district, and it's not going into additional markup by another person managing that work. Another thing I want to touch base on here in the next slide is our best value bidding. What you see up on the screen is an example of a bid tabulation from a best value bid, and what a best value bid is, is an additional layer of protection for Hudson School District, as well as an additional layer of hopefully some budget savings. What you see at the top is a bid tabulation of nine bidders on a prospective work scope, we usually shoot to get four or five in each individual work scope, so over the course of forty to fifty bid packages, you can see how many bids that is to get. In the best value bidding process, there are additional appendices that are submitted along with their base bid price, what those outline are, can the contractor meet the project's schedule, can the contractor, does, do they have a valid reputation for quality, do they have a valid reputation for safety, do they have any prospective budget savings that they can see from the documents that Crowe's Anderson and Bray Architects may not have seen during the design phase? Those things all bring added value, and through the best value process, ninety-five, ninety-nine percent of the time, the low bid is usually qualified, but there are those instances... But there are those instances where a contractor will bid a project and physically can't man the schedule, or they have a bad reputation for a longevity of quality work. And those are all things that we want to make sure we're all on the same page on before starting work to ensure you guys have a great project.
This is Dustin was saying, as we look at quality, how do we ensure we do it right the first time? And K has established a series of processes from pre-construction all the way through warranty closeout process to make sure that we're systematic in this approach. As our approach to quality, we start upfront in the design phase with really the idea of how do we understand what the design intent is? What do the documents show? What are the details required? And how do we communicate that information to our prospective bidders? As Dustin was saying, through the work scopes. And then also, once they come on board, to make sure we work with them, that they understand the intent, the expectations of the details, and that we have a strong belief that as a team, that if we construct the details as drawn, they will perform over time. We focus in a lot through our communication processes and pre-install meetings, which Jeff really leads with support from Matt and I. We want to make sure that they understand the technical requirements of the contract documents and the technical requirements of the systems that we're dealing with. My background, I was an architect by training, moved over to the construction side about nine years ago. I'm sort of an exterior nerd, I guess, as I look at it that way. So how do we put envelopes together and make sure buildings perform to the level they need? And it's a strong area of passion, one that Dustin and I worked a lot on over the years, and Gary and I as well, to make sure we do it right and we help the whole team understand the issues and the, and our trade contractors really understand that same attention to details. So it's really about doing it right the first time and meeting the owner's requirements.
So as Mike said, he comes from the architect profession and I come from the engineering profession. So, but our job is not to do the design for the design team, you have a design team already. But we're really here to help provide a second set of eyes, to really understand the details of the design, make sure that's being communicated to the subcontracts, as Mike said, through the bidding process. On the mechanical, electrical side, the cost can easily be thirty percent of the total budget for the project. So it's really important that we understand, you know, what, where those dollars are going and how, what kind of systems we're looking at, the different choices. Sustainability is a part of that as well. And in the case of this project, because you have a lot of remodeling, the cost could even be a little bit higher because you're going to be replacing all the mechanical, electrical systems throughout the existing building. So again, that adds another level of complexity that we really need to understand and look at early on in the beginning of the, of the project. You know, how we phase this project, the, and phasing, and I'm talking about the demising partitions between the phases is really going to be dictated a lot by those existing mechanical systems, for instance, and how we, you know, how the air distribution is distributed with ductwork and air handling units, and where's the logical place to create that dividing line between the phases. It's important that we understand that and that we try and accommodate that as much as possible because that could really have a big part as to the cost of the project and how we can be as efficient as possible with, with doing the phasing work.
Again, my name is Jeff Moore, I'd be your site superintendent on a project. My multiple hats I wear, kind of start early in the morning, and it goes from safety to orientation with all the employees coming out, to safety to students exiting, equipment coming out, review the equipment, make sure their backup alarms are equipped, and then site-specific erection plans. We just did about an hour and a half pick plan for pre-cast drawings and for the crane position and tying thirty-three-foot panels to exist in building that's occupied. So it's very well worth having. It's, everybody understands, everybody stays out of the way, everybody's out of area on the interior of the building. I also work with Mike real close on, on control aspects of the building and design for outside, as Mike calls his guru's speech on exterior envelope. And then weekly, we have performance meetings, scheduling our normal schedule, our weekly schedules, and I work with Dustin on, on our full schedule for the full process of the job. And then last, but very important, is security, security of the building, security of the existing building, fencing, whatever it takes to keep pedestrians out or people that want to look around and make sure nobody gets injured at all times.
I'm just going to add a couple more things, and then I think Gary's going to jump in on some things. So you heard Mike and Matt talk about, you know, Mike being on the architectural side of things and his experience, and Matt on the mechanical engineering, and we really feel it's a differentiator that Crowe's Anderson brings. And I want to give another example on the mechanical side of things on a school that we built in Blaine. And, you know, it was, you know, a tough project, and we spent a lot of times with engineers on a proposed system, and what was the lifecycle cost payback of that type of system? And after a series of meeting, well, two-hour meeting, we came up with an idea and a system that was still very efficient, but it was two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars less than the original system proposed with a less payback. But that was just using brains and working together and having experience with people like this and people like Mike. And Jeff's going to add to that too. Again, I've been at K for twenty-one years, and I've known Jeff that whole time. We've done a lot of work together and a lot of successful work together, a lot of repeat client work together, so.
Just a final point too, that I think is really important. You know, we're really here to work with the design team and to help the design team be as efficient as possible. And, and when I do that, a mechanical engineer, the thing I focus on is what is the design intent of this project? And we really work hard to, you know, when we look at options from a value engineering standpoint, to make sure that we're preserving and maintaining the design intent when we make those suggestions. So that's really a focus that we take really seriously when, when we're working in that process.
All right, next, I, I don't know, I call this the good stuff. We get into actually looking at your project and how we think we're going to build it. So this is a handle that was sent out to eleven-by-seventeens, hard copies, but this, this-
That Gary worked on over the weekend.
Yeah. So this kind of goes to Jeff's point about site safety as well, and it's all about communication, communication to your staff, communication to the public, communication to the students, and communication to the contractors. So we see this as, I don't know if you can follow the cursor, but we kind of envision starting the new stadium this, as soon as Mother Nature allows, you know, this, this March, April, probably April. And we can cordon that off, we can, we can fence that off, we can, we can keep all the construction access limited to that area. And then looking at the schedule and some of the walkthrough that we did, again, being presumptuous because we haven't been able to sit in any of the meetings, but just kind of looking at it at a first glance. Starting Phase One, starting the building construction, the beginning of June. Don't interrupt the flow of the school, the school year with trying to jump in here in April, May and disrupt the whole center of the, of the, of the building. That allows us, I mean, we feel comfortable with the schedule for the stadium. If you've got an April start, May start, there's no problem getting that ready for football season.
We're doing four turfs at Stillwater in the same amount of time.
Yep. So it allows us, June One, or the last day of school, is to get on-site, set up our staging area, and gives us the three months of the summer to get the parking lot, get all the new parking lot, and how we kind of have it configured when you can kind of see where it says student drop-off. This follows, this follows the same layout of what's, what's there, that road that kind of traverses through the parking lot. And with some, you know, jersey barricades and fencing, it allows, it allows the parents as they're coming in to drop the students off directly to a sidewalk that never crosses construction traffic. That they, they'll never, they'll never be coming through a construction area that whole first fifteen months of construction. We'll, we'll have this cordoned off. The only place construction crosses is when they come off a vine and they, and they take a, take a right into the construction entrance. And again, I know you're talking, talking with the, putting the school bus drop on the back. Again, that allows, by doing it in the summer, allows us to get that set up and get your, your buses dropping off for that next school year. Again, staying completely away from construction for fifteen months, or the twelve months of, or nine months of school. Again, so we're totally away from the kids. It allows the parents to come and drop off and exit out of the site without interference of the construction traffic. And then as we kind of, as we move through the other phases, so imagine this is the start of the following school year. The main, the main building is completely done, the new, the new parking lot is completely done. That would be what was our construction staging area that, that second summer would be converted into a parking lot. So, that following school year, the front of the house is done, parking lots are done, the, the field already has been done, the new addition is completely done. And again, we're working on Phase Five and Six in the back corner of the building, construction traffic off of Oak Street. And, and again, we're isolating ourselves from, from the students and the parents and the school buses. We don't cross, we don't cross them at all during construction. And again, jumping to the final, final phase, again, we just see ourselves moving, moving to that new parking lot on the north edge of it, working on Phase Seven, Eight, and Nine. Again, just trying to isolate us away from the kids and the teachers and the, and the, and the parents. We feel that it might, it might not, it might be better to start early. You know, the earlier you start construction, the better, but we understand that there's, there's a lot of other things that are involved in that, and that's, most importantly, is just making sure we do it on time, but that we do it as safely as possible. And the same thinking goes for the middle school. I mean, we walked that site. Is this, again, just trying to isolate ourselves to the south side, bringing construction traffic in? You know, we looked at coming in the back way, but I know that the kids come out there for recess. So again, just trying to find a way that, that we can come in and we never have to cross, and they never have to cross us, and we can do our work and work safely. And when we, again, this is, this is being presumptuous, we haven't sat down with people, but this is what we do, and this is kind of another living design. I mean, this is our first pass, but there's five or six variations of this. Once we sit down with, with the administration and the staff and say, "I like that, but I don't like this completely. Can we tweak this?" because of whatever. But I mean, it's, we're, we're very user-friendly that way. It's just, we like to throw out a lot of options and kind of get feedback. But at the end of the day, it's, it's, you know, keeping, keeping us out of the way of the kids and keeping the kids away from us.
Let's go back to that Phase Two, Gary. I'm just going to add something a little bit. Right where Phase One, which is the new, new addition, whereas you're tying into the existing building. So it says, you can show them Phase Two there a little bit. That was a later phase in the original diagram, and again, that's, we've got so much work to do with Bray and you as the owner, so this is only ideas. But we do know that that structure, I'm guessing, is going to have to be beefed up because of snow load because you're putting a second-story addition on right there. So regardless, where that current lobby space is, where it says Phase Two now, was Phase Seven, I believe, but we're going to have to be in there beefing up that structure before we put two levels up. So while we're in there, we might as well do the other mechanical work too. So by moving that up, I think helps the schedule and allows us to get that work done, but then not start the main construction. And again, we got to traffic kids around and students, but we'll work that out.
Yeah, and again, kind of to what John's point was, is, I mean, this is, again, a run at it. If we just focus on, on Phase One construction and Phase Two, and I've, again, highlighted some, a larger area of Phase Two in the green shaded here, this would be the first summer. As soon as we, we show up on-site and start work on the new addition, we would get in here and do the remodel of Phase Two. This is a bit more than what is shown on the phasing plan, but we feel that we've got to get back into the central plant anyways and start doing work there in order to start feeding out from there and start working on these additions. We've done, we've done enough summer slams, works in school districts to understand like what we're capable of biting off and what, what we're not capable of biting off, and this is definitely in the wheelhouse of being, this is, we feel pretty comfortable with this. And again, it, it allows us to, Phase Two, if you imagine that back of house where you had your school bus drop, whatever we have to do, whatever we have to do to drop kids and have that new entrance for them come on the backside, that allows you that three months of summer to make whatever configuration changes you need to make to those corridors. And again, just allows us into that mechanical space to start working on that, knowing that, that this area right here, structurally, we're going to have to get into anyways. And then it also, again, not, not meeting with Bray at all yet, but just understanding that I know those kids come across the parking lot between classes. And that year of construction, Phase One, that's not going to happen. So how, if we can get in here that first summer, maybe we can, maybe we can widen corridors, even if it's a temporary basis just for a year, but somehow to alleviate those, that pinch point of the kids crossing. It gives us three months of work to get in there and lay out an efficient plan so that when the kids come and they actually see construction, that, that we've, we've got a plan there that's been in place, and we've worked on it for three months to get it, to get it working. And again, just looking at the Phase Two, if we were able to bite off that piece, that first summer, that means we're out of there by January versus July. And time is money for us, I mean, it's three hundred, that's, I think roughly three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars in site services fee for us to be there till July. So if we can get out of there by January or Christmas, I mean, we're, we're happy to do that. And that's kind of looking at that, I mean, we're, again, we're constantly looking to say, you know, with, with Matt too, and mechanically, how does this work? How do we jump across here and do that? We feel comfortable, this is definitely doable. And maybe these phases tweak a little bit, but I mean, we're, we're comfortable with what we're, with what we're coming with.
I think, you know, again, we're thinking about, and we don't have all the details yet, we're just sort of brainstorming, but the idea being to get the central plant systems ready to go, so as we do the additions, we're connecting those back to a new plant rather than trying to do a temporary to an existing plant that maybe has to get changed later on. So again, it's, it's trying to find the most cost-effective way to, to deal with all of those issues. And we need to work with Bray and the owner to really understand more of the details, but these are just some initial thoughts.
I'll talk quick here on fees, schedule in fees. So billings as, as is related to the percent of project completion. So we, we bill as the project gets complete, we don't bill upfront, we don't bill ahead. It's, when we're five percent complete, we bill five percent for our, our fees. That's, that way you're, you're safe that if something goes wrong at seventy percent, we've been paid seventy percent, you're not, we're not out ahead of that. And site services, I don't, I mean, we can discuss, is this more Q and A, or do we, do you want to? Okay. You know, so I'm assuming everyone has this. When we say like, our people, I mean, our people are, that's, that's where the money is. And again, we have, I mean, I'm, I'm the main, I'll be the main point of contact from, from day one till, till the end of the job. Dustin will be on-site full-time, Jeff will be on-site full-time. We have administrative, you know, a project accountant that, that works on the project. Every month, she's going to do, do the pay applications of the forty different contractors, submit them to Tim for review and payment. Yes, and so on general conditions, and this is, I mean, we kind of want to be clear on, on what general conditions are, and that's that onsite expenses, it totals just over a million dollars. That's, we manage that cost, but it's not an additional revenue to Crowe's Anderson. So it's, we tell you, you should probably assume you're going to spend a hundred thousand dollars on dumpsters. But we'll ma, when, we'll manage that cost for you, submit those costs for payment. But it's, it's, it's very transparent and it's auditable, it's, here's the invoice from the concrete, or from the waste management provider, and it's to the penny. That's what we're asking for reimbursement, there's no markup, there's no hidden fees. It's, it's in and out for us, but as part of our service, we collect all the-
We, we take the control away from the trade or the subcontractors, so we can control winter heat, we can control dumpsters, we can make sure it's local if needed, and et cetera, et cetera. We, on your behalf, it's totally transparent and we control those costs. Why don't I just wrap it up quick, thirty seconds? Just the YK, I'm not going to go through any, each of these. We are passionate about your job, we do live close, we would really love to be a part of your project. I'm not going to hit all these bullet points, they're all true. We have a lot of experience doing, we're doing all those projects I showed you earlier. We'd love for you to call those references, we'd love for you to go to the Stillwater project and see what's going on because in a year, your high school is going to look like that high school looks like right, right now. There's a lot of things going on as, as we speak. There's a lot of things going on as we speak. And the very last slide, and I'll just leave it up, we always put up our mission, our core values that we worked awful hard on corporately, that we like to share. With that, I think we're right on time, I hope.
Okay, questions from board members?
Mr. President?
Yes, Rob.
Question for Matt. You know, the MEP piece sounds nice. I mean, it sounds expensive, candidly. Bray, they've hired a mechanical consultant. They do a lot of that.
Sure.
You know, our, you know, value engineering post-bid, our subcontractors know those plans and specs very well. Likely, they'll find value. What's, really, what is your value?
Checking during construction to make sure that the quality is being installed correctly by the subs. That's, you know, helping with startup, commissioning at the end of the job. Those are other things that I would also help with, to make sure that, you know, we're not missing something, that everything's being addressed, so that it's a seamless turnover at the end. Value engineering, cost estimating, helping with that during the pre-construction phase, making sure we're tracking budget-wise as the design keeps being developed. So it's, I'm not duplicating anything that the design team is doing. It's additional services related to what they're doing to make sure that we're tracking on budget, so that we don't have any surprises come bid day.
So you check their work, or?
Yes, absolutely. Plan review, look at the drawings, absolutely. Making sure that, you know, if there's issues there, we can work with them to fill gaps. Make sure that the subcontractors understand the documents when they're bidding it. You know, that's an important part, too, that they're not missing something when they're bidding the drawings. So it's, I'm not here to duplicate what they're doing by any means. I'm really, it's value-added to make sure that, you know, we're tracking budget and scope all the way through, and then we have a seamless turnover at the end with startup. So it's, hopefully, that's value-added.
Well, is it much different, though, than value engineering after the fact? I mean, if we're using subcontractors after the fact who are familiar with the plans and specifications, doesn't that add the same?
Well, we will even provide value engineering before we bid the job. That's a big part of my role, is to look for options and system choices. You know, we work with the design team to discuss those things, and the owner to say, you know, these are the goals, you know, there's different ways to get there, there's different system choices. Just looking at how we're going to do the remodeling, how we're going to phase that. You know, that's, typically, the design documents are not necessarily going to show all of the issues that you have to deal with to make sure the phasing works. And so there's an issue between what the design documents are showing and how that gets bid to the subcontractors, so there's information there that has to be added for a complete bid. You know, you have to do temporary ductwork connections, for instance, or temporary piping connections because of the way you're doing the phasing. So I think we want to look at that and make sure that we find the most cost-effective way to do that, and that's going to happen long before we bid the job.
And you do that?
Yes, that'd be during pre-design, and I would help with that.
Mr. President?
Yes, Lynn.
In the Stillwater project, can you speak to your role in communication with the community?
Our community engagement? Well-
We're talking more construction, not-
The construction, community engagement portion and traffic control is-
I got it.
You got it?
So during, like, we went back to the phasing plans. I mean, we do a lot of graphics with the community to let them know, like, here's what we're going to be doing this week, or here's what we're going to be doing this summer. You know, so everyone can see and know what to expect and say, okay, great, they're going to be working on the football field. But then, and we do that through newsletters. I mean, there is Rob Bach, the principal over at Stillwater. Every week, he's got a weekly blog. We would contribute to his blog every week. A lot of that, once we get into renovation, Stu, is, he would like, he would blog and say, okay, here's, don't park here, park over there, they're going to be coming through here. And yeah, so it's, we have weekly meetings with the principals, and it's not to talk construction, like, design and what's, it's to talk where we're going to be, do you know where we're going to be? And we need to know where you're going to be. You know, so it's, we, there's a lot of communication. Again, it's just constant.
And if I could add into that, too, we had a lot of summer events going on over at Stillwater schools. I mean, there's a lot of baseball, football events. We worked with the school district on communications that went out to say, here's how you're going to access those ball fields during the summer, because as plans change, things change on site, and routing of people around that site does have to change. So we'd get out new plans, similar to what Gary just showed in our phasing, to make sure, hey, here's how you're entering off of Highway Five, or here's how you're coming in off of 58th for the next three weeks in order to access those fields, something that not only the school could send out to the parents and the students, but also send out to visiting teams and people coming into your district over the summers.
Thank you.
Sandy?
Yeah, I just have one question. In the original information that you gave us a month or so ago, you're, the total figure that you gave us was 3.432 million, and now in this one, it is 4.461 million. The difference that I'm seeing is the onsite expenses were not in the first one, and they are in this one. Is that correct?
Yeah, the general conditions are onsite expenses, that million nine seven. Also, there was a small tweak in the construction value that was, yeah.
My question to you, then, is, other than those onsite expenses, which it sounds like they're strictly a pass-through, whatever they are, we pay.
Yep.
If they're more than the 1.097, we pay that. If they're less, we pay less, right?
Correct.
Okay, the rest of those fees, are they inclusive? There will be no other fees other than these?
Correct. And when you, we wanted it to be apples-to-apples, you know, to answer the RFP per the schedule. But when we talked about, you know, is it possible to get out of here by January or Christmas? That's a conversation with Dr. Hallett and Jim to say, you don't need, you don't need these site services, so that comes down. They're not going to go up.
Okay, all right.
Yep.
You answered it. Thank you.
That was a $350,000, Gary, represented. So if the phasing diagram works and we're onsite less, our site services, our people power have less hours, and it'd go down by $350,000.
Thank you. You answered it.
Thanks.
My question is follow-up. You saw the sample, the contract that we would have you sign if we pick you in the next 24 hours. So are you comfortable with the terms of the contract?
I would say 98% of it, yes. There are some tweaking we would request and some roles and responsibility on the architectural side and the construction manager side. I've actually taken the opportunity to, on a PDF, mark some changes that are pretty easy to see. I think they're fairly simple wordsmithing. There's no language that's being stricken or things like that. So recommended in changing words based on interpretation, which I'm sure you'll understand, and things like that. But it's, again, it's a half a dozen, six or seven marks that are, again, but nothing being stricken. The insurance is fine, that you have in there, which are higher, much higher limits than normal, but luckily, Crowe-Sandersen's able to get those rates without any additional cost. So.
I think, yeah, just a little, on the clarifiki, there's, the last article of the contract kind of, kind of says something different than the meat of the rest of the contract as far as, I mean, our concern is what, with Bray Architects, we don't contract with them, so what, if they, if something happens, are we liable for what they do?
Okay. You want to protect yourself there, I understand.
Yeah, so there's, at the last article of the contract, it kind of says, you're not responsible for that.
Other than that wording, are you fine with the contract?
Yeah, there's, and I can be a little more specific if you'd like. Some of it's just some correction where it says general construction, where I think they meant construction manager. There's other things in the liability language that talks about district has approximate consequences, and we put, but only extent caused by Crowe-Sandersen. So we, that was a gray term to us, but I think you meant the same, and I think you would agree to that, hopefully. We did, under one portion of the contract, it talks about, you know, having subcontractors not looking at the drawings for conflict, you know, reasons, and then we just added, unless approved by the owner. And the reason we put that is we rely on LeJune Steel and these large steel manufacturers and other vendors, Trane, you name it. We need to keep an eye on the market, and it helps for us to talk to vendors, but I understand that you don't want a conflict of interest for bidding, but we'd make that very transparent if we were going to talk to vendors. So we, we're not, wouldn't strike it, but we just want permission to talk, because then, the way it reads now, at a certain point of design, we're not supposed to talk to contractors the way this reads. So it's a simple language like that. It did talk about the architects' roles and responsibility. The way it reads now is, we will ensure that the drawings are perfect and done correctly, and that's our job, even though we aren't registered engineers and architects. But it does kind of correct itself back into general conditions, so I think we're okay.
Okay.
So I just added some language referencing that. Let's see, there's not much. The, being within 5% of the estimate, we will leave, you know, so after 95% complete drawings, it was, if we miss our estimate by 5%, which in all the projects I talked about, all are under budget, so we didn't miss it by 5%, but we just added a word-
If you miss it 5% on the low side, that's okay.
That's okay. Good. We just wanted to add a word and say, we'll keep it in there, but we want to say, well, a lot of times, what can happen, and is, things happen in that 5%, like, oh, we need a canopy here, or we need to add something here, or, oh, we just thought we want this restroom over here, and things can get added. So we just added some language to clean that up to say, okay, when we hand 95%, there may be some scope creep that we couldn't estimate because it wasn't on the drawings. So that's just clarifying language for that. But in other words, we agree with it. Some things we're going to just want to check with the architect on substantial completion and final completion. This has us writing the certificate of completion. We will do that, and we will keep it that way, but Bray's, our contract, may say the same thing. So we're used to it being the architect's role, but we're happy to take the role, but there's no sense having it twice.
Well, other than removing inconsistencies, let me ask you this. So you have some tweaking of language. What about the amount of your fee? Is that negotiable?
Yes. It is.
Any board members have other questions?
You made reference to being under budget on many of your projects. Does that mainly because post-bid value engineering, or is it because of all the great work you do prior to bid?
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I would say it's, I mean, I would say it's pre-bid, that we understand, you know, when we do our estimates, again, we don't, we don't want to be the lowest bidder, projected to be the lowest bidder on bid day. We want to have a little bit of cushion in there in case something happens, but, and then we also, you know, on a tight, on a tight project, you might have some alternates, you know, as a relief valve in case, okay, we would really love to have the operable partition, but if bids don't come in, let's not do that. So I mean, we try and, we try and protect you and us and the architect that when bids come in, we can evaluate them and make some, you know, maybe there's an alternate, one or two, but the project's going to go full steam ahead. We're not going back to do value engineering, extensive value engineering, and so.
We have at least one of our candidates touted the fact that they've never been involved in a lawsuit. How about Crowe-Sandersen? And if so, was it involving a school district?
Never involved in a lawsuit. In my career, at 21 years at Crowe-Sandersen, I have never, on a K-12 project, and that's my world, I have never been involved in a lawsuit that's been sued in K, in K-12, in my 21 years, to my knowledge. I don't know if, well, I've been here longer than anybody else, but, so I don't know if there's any other projects prior or before that, or, there's been contractors that have been sued in a CMA on a project where we weren't being sued, but a contractor was because they weren't performing, and we assisted the owner throughout that whole process. Well, a mechanical contractor went bankrupt is one scenario, then Cottage Grove that we had, but, you know, those things happen, and that's why we have bonds and other things. So we certainly support the district in that scenario.
What percentage of projects you've acted as a construction manager, as an, you know, as the agent for the district, have you not self-performed? In other words, not tried to bid any of the work?
We don't self-perform. Even, I mean, Ellsworth, we're doing CM as constructor or at risk. Balsam Lake and Baldwin are CMs constructor at risk. Those are probably the only three right now, but still, on those projects, we're not doing any self-perform.
You mentioned your 95% K-12 of your time. How about the rest of the panel? Are they similar?
Yep. Yep, that's, yeah, like I was saying, like, this is, at least Dustin and I, this is what we do. You know, this is, the K-12 market is our, we live in the K-12 sector of Crowe-Sandersen.
I know Crowe-Sandersen does other stuff besides education. What's the percentage breakdown?
Mike, you remember better than I do, but, so Crowe-Sandersen is, I'm going to round off, a billion-dollar construction company, and about, I would say, 40% of that volume is K-12. Second place, medical, hospitality, and then there's some retail, industrial, and some data centers and how little things-
Have you done any fine art centers?
Have I done fine arts? I absolutely have.
Okay, good. I just had to get that in there for Sue. All right. Any other questions? Otherwise, we've hit our 45 minutes. All right, with that, I want to thank folks from Crowe-Sandersen for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll take another five-minute recess, maybe six, and then we will be making a motion to go into closed session. I'll call the meeting back to order, and our last candidate, set of candidates, I guess, has left, so I will entertain a motion to go into closed session.
Mr. President, I move to adjourn to closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statute 19.85 pair and one pair and E, deliberating in negotiating selection of a construction manager wherever competitive or bargaining reasons require closed session.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Motion by Lynn, second by Sue. This requires a roll call vote. We'll start with Carrie.
Whitaker.
Brown.
Gerke, aye.
Johnson, aye.
Robson, aye.
Kattas, aye.
The motion passes, and we are now in closed session.